Good morning, everyone. Welcome to the Dare County Board of Commissioners, September the 6th, 2022, Board of Commissioners meeting. At this time, I'd like to call on the Reverend Nathan Finan from St. Andrews Church for an implication. Reverend, thank you so much for being here this morning.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, thank you for having me. I invite you to prepare for prayer. Most gracious and loving God, before we begin today's work, we pause to give you thanks. You are the source of life and love, hope and peace, and we thank you for the fresh start and possibility of this new day. We recognize your care for and of creation and pray that all of us, especially these your servants would join in loving this county we call home, just as you love this place and people. We ask that you would give our leaders your justice and righteousness, your wisdom and courage. Help these commissioners to listen, first of all, to you, to the community and to one another. Help them also to speak, especially to amplify the voices of those in our community who are the most vulnerable and rarely heard. As we seek to live as good neighbors, we pray for our neighbors, neighbors we find easy to love and neighbors we find harder to love. We also lift up each agenda item in each department and employee represented here today. We pray that our agenda would follow your agenda and that we may live united as your beloved community. Help us join you in making Dare County a healthy and flourishing home for all. Grant that these your servants have everything they need, that they would fulfill their important role in making our county a better home for all of us. We pray this all in your name. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, Reverend. May we stand for the pledge? Congratulations to the flag of the United States of America, which is the government of which stays one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. This morning, we have Commissioner House, who is not with us today, he has an excused absence. We're also honored this morning to have with us Senator Bobby Haney. Bobby, where are you at? Sitting out there.
There's Bobby.
Stand up so we can see you.
There we go.
Now, stand up.
Thank you for being here, Senator. All right, at this time, I'll turn it over to the county manager.
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman. Item one is the chairman's opening remarks.
Thank you, county manager. Are there any college football fans out there today? How about tennis fans? How about tennis? No tennis? Oh, my God. What an awesome weekend for college football, more upsets and more crazy stuff going on and what a heck of a way to start a season. Couple of upsets in the U.S. tennis. Rafael last night and Miss Williams last Friday. Unbelievable. So continue to watch exciting sports in the weeks to come. Got a few things this morning. This has been the summer of beach nourishment. I don't think we've ever had as many projects taking place at one time than we've had this summer. Buxton and Avon was completed on August the 16th, record time by Great Lakes, incredible company. Naxit was completed on August the 27th, once again, the Great Lakes. The Northern Beaches Project, KDH, has been finished and it's started on the 27th. Weeks started on the 27th, Kitty Hawk. And once they finish that, they'll move north to Southern Shores and to Duck. So you stop and think of it, Avon, Buxton, Naxit, Kill Devil Hills, Kitty Hawk, Southern Shores and Duck. I don't know that we can do too much beach nourishment in Manio, but unbelievable projects this summer taking place. And importantly so, because that is our economic engine, and this board is committed to do the maintenance. Over $200 million in the last 10 years, incredible amounts of money, but we have to do that in order to protect our most precious economic engine, and that's tourism. So great stuff on Great Lakes and weeks dredging companies. What about the game changer that happened August the 19th? Anybody know what I'm referring to?
Two things.
Yep, several things. You're right, Commissioner Couch. The arrival of Miss Katie on August the 19th. The vice chairman, myself, we had the opportunity to be driven out to the inlet with a, on a charter fishing boat. And once we got out there, a towing company offloaded us onto that, pulled up to the side of the dredge and we climbed up the, climbed up the side of the dredge and we rode the dredge into Wine Cheese. Just incredible day. Hats off to Chairman of the Task Force, Jim Tobin and his group for making this come to fruition. Senator Haney, while he was on the other side, the legislature there was certainly instrumental in pushing that and helping us as well. Just an incredible, this is unheard of, folks. One of its kind in the United States of America. Doesn't happen. One of its kind, and we ought to really be so proud of that. Got a video to show you if you got a couple of minutes. August the 19th, 2022 will go down in history noting the official arrival of the Miss Katie here in Dare County.
It's official, and thanks to the crew that brought her up here, the Miss Katie is home.
I think all of us know what an important and pivotal moment this is for Dare County, and especially for our commercial recreational fishermen who rely upon accessibility through our waterways in order to make a living and provide for their families. Thank you for showing that, man. I appreciate it. Another good day in Dare County. Another first, August the 15th. The Dare campus opened the doors for students to attend a new $18.5 million learning facility for Dare COA. I had the privilege of being there that morning with Dean Sweeney and President Bagwell. Dean Sweeney actually got some young lady that he knew quite well that plays the bagpipes, and she serenaded the students as they came in the door that morning. It was a welcome sight, and it's great when you ride by the campus daily to see that parking lot full of cars. Just another accomplishment by this board to make this happen, along with the Dare Guarantee Scholarship that so many of our kids in Dare County are taking advantage of. So very good stuff. Very, very good stuff. August 19th, once again, big day in Dare County. August 19th, three major events. The second one that afternoon, Congressman Murphy came and we lent him our facilities to propose legislature for jetty feasibility study for Oregon inlet. Now, I understand everybody's going to sit here and say, well, that's the most studied inlet in the United States of America. And guess what? You're right. But that's last study was done too long ago, and so we gotta reinvent the wheel again. So he's done that, and he's going to introduce legislature to study that once more, one more time. Lot of pros and cons from people about that, but we said this, and I think, I think the Chairman of the Task Force will agree with me that Miss Katie is, as proud as we are to have her here, 365 days a year for Oregon and Hatteras inlet, it certainly can't do it all. So there, we, there's a potential for other options to help us out, and I commend Congressman Murphy for stepping up to the plate and at least seeing if that's a possibility. And of course, last but not least, Commissioner House was at this function all day, I mean, Couch was at this function all day, and that's the National Aviation Day was held here in Manio at the Dare County Regional Airport. It marked Oval's birthday, Wright Brothers National Memorial, Outer Banks forever. Some interesting stuff here. You know, I like, I've been reading several books recently on the Wright Brothers, and every time I read one, I'm fascinated by even more additional information than I read about these two brothers. On Oval's 37th birthday, he boarded a train from Ohio, and he certainly wasn't traveling for fun in celebration. He was headed to Washington, D.C. for one of the most important appointments in his lifetime. He was headed to D.C. to demonstrate flights for the United States Army Signal Corps at Fort Myers in Virginia. Now, his father, Milton, he was worried about his son's flying. In his diary on August the 19th of 1908, it read, "Both he and Wilbur pearl their lives, perhaps Oval most by the unsuitability-ness of the grounds at Fort Myers. Despite their father's fears and contrary to popular belief." Do you realize that neither Wright brother died as a result of an airplane crash? Oval survived numerous mishaps and saw another four decades of birthdays, four more decades. Oval was present for the dedication of the monument right down the street here in Kill Devil Hills, which was known as Big Kill Devil Hills back then in 1932. He also saw the establishment of National Aviation Day on his birthday in 1939. Oval lived until 1948. I was born in '46, so I'm happy to say I was alive when Oval Wright was alive. That's pretty cool.
1946, Mr. Chairman?
Yeah, '46.
Looks good, doesn't it get?
But he died in '48 at the age of 76 years old. He earned many honors, including the gold medals from the U.S. Congress, the Aero Club de France, and the Aero Club of America. Commissioner Couch, I know you were there all day, Aviation Day was quite a day.
Beautiful weather, outstanding. Those, we can only go so far. We can't clone ourselves to be everywhere, but that was a very, very busy day.
Yeah. Thank you for being there and representing the board. County Manager, that concludes my chairman's comments.
Chairman, that brings us to item two on the agenda, which is our service pins. This morning, we have a recipient from August who couldn't be here in August. Katisha Bryant's here to receive her, she's a public health education specialist, and she'll be receiving her 15-year pin from Roxanna Ballinger.
Roxanne, welcome this morning.
Thank you. Katisha's here with her mom and dad today, and I know how proud they are of her to get this pin. Katisha was hired on August 1st, 2007, and she went to Elizabeth City State University. And I know she's really proud of that, because I believe her dad also graduated from there too. Katisha is well-versed in many of our programs for the past 15 years. She started out with the Substance Use Demonstration Project years ago, and now she continues with substance use prevention education. She's taught in the elementary schools. Then she moved into the community and the detention center, working with the female population, teaching evidence-based skills to help them recover and be a productive part of the community. Katisha is well-respected in the community and at the Dare County Detention Center. They love her programs there. She is dedicated and has a real passion for her work. Katisha worked during, in the call center during the COVID pandemic, and she was one of the first people's names that came up to be in the call center because she has such a calm and soothing voice, and we knew that she would do a great job there. She's a wonderful asset to our team. She always has a smile on her face and looks for the positive in everyone she comes in contact with. Katisha, thank you for everything you do, and it's my pleasure to give you your 15-year pin. Congratulations. I'm so glad for you.
Katisha, before you sit down, folks, 15 years is certainly a great accomplishment with Dare County. But let me just tell you, during COVID-19, if she worked, she worked those phones, just like a number of our employees. I was over there numerous times, and if you don't think that they didn't get an earful when they made those phone calls, and they, and somebody like her, keeping her calm, keeping the presence, and being totally professional was way, way beyond. Katisha, I can't thank you for that, for having to put up with that, that was uncalled for, but thank you for what you did during that period of time for us in Dare County and making us proud. We appreciate it.
Thank you.
Next, we have Angela Long. She's a social worker for, and she'll be receiving her 25-year pin from Chuck Lycett.
Good morning, Commissioners. It's an honor for me to present Angela with her 25-year service pin. Angela was one of the first employees I met when I joined the department in 2003. She was my trainer, and she taught me how to conduct Child Protective Services investigations. It was an eventful first day going to Stumpy Point. Angela started at Social Services after graduating from Meredith College with a bachelor's in social work. Her desire to help others came from hearing a song by Pat Benatar. She worked for two years as an income maintenance caseworker and was recognized as an employee of the quarter award recipient. She's been a Child Protective Services social worker for the last 25 years. Competitive, honest, thoughtful, and a little bossy are a few words to describe Angela. Angela is usually the first one in the office in the morning. She has a morning routine. Early to rise at 5:00 a.m., a few morning household chores, pick up coffee at front porch, and a weekly breakfast out. She is a creature of habit, and it works for her. Recently, Angela made a comment about where her morning had gone. She was a little rattled by the time she had lost. Her supervisor, Sally Laws, who's unable to be here today, provided some of these comments about Angela, so I'm sharing those with you as well. Sally had to remind her that she came into the office that day at regular opening hours, like us less superhumans, and that is why she was out of sorts. She had lost her edge for the day. I also need to point out that Angela needs her lunch around noon every day. But even when Angela might momentarily lose her edge, she is never, she is ever Johnny on the spot. She helps clients to be in a better place from how she met them. Far too many families who are involved with child welfare are generational. Angela has been part of many of these families' lives during the last 25 years. She's watched parents become grandparents and children become parents. Families know and respect her. She found a niche working with teens and their parents. Her work with teens is simple. Let's meet for coffee and let the teen talk. Child safety and family cohesiveness are paramount to her drive. She listens, she cares, she's never idle. She trained to be a child and family team facilitator this year and reread the Child Protective Services manual when she had downtime. Angela has been around so long, 25 years, that she has had to train her supervisors. Sally was especially, feels especially fortunate to have survived the Angela Long School of reformed bosses, for to be a graduate of this prestigious training institution means you have to have survived the monumental pressure to be the best version of yourself or Angela. As a teacher and a mentor of new team members, she is no nonsense, will tell you like it is, will cheer your successes, and make sure you are prepared for everything to come. Angela likes to say to Sally and to many others that she will be her last supervisor that she trains, as she readily likes to make her verbal declarations of her impending departure. While we hope Angela will be here for at least another 10 years, we are disappointed. She likes to remind everybody that the remaining time, that of her remaining time with us and puts her remaining years at much less than 10. Angela is a mother of two, a very young grandmother of two, a wife and a dutiful daughter. She has cats, definitely hates vegetables, and is a friend to many. She is also a competitive bowler. She is also a competitive walker. Each fall, Angela participates in the Northeast North Carolina Partnership for Public Health Get Moving Challenge. In 2001, she walked 1,100, excuse me, 2021, she walked 1,164,572 steps in six weeks. This was the second highest number of top, of the top 100 walkers in the Northeast region of DHHS. She often got close to 10,000 steps before clocking in in the mornings, walking the Manio waterfront before sunrise. She also serves on the Social Committee for Social Services, having spearheaded the return of the Employee of the Quarter recognition, that employees are recognized and appreciated for their contributions. Angela Long has been a steadfast asset to Dare County. It has been a privilege and an honor to know, learn from, and be part of her orbit. Please congratulate me on her 25 years of achievement.
What'd you say, a million steps?
Million, 1,164,572.
What in God's name do you do on your spare time?
I didn't have any spare time for about six weeks.
Next, we have our Employee of the Month, Mr. Chairman, and Jenny Collins will make that presentation.
Good morning, Mrs. Jenny.
Good morning, Chairman and members of the Board of Commissioners. I'd like to invite up Advanced EMT Matt Cartwright. Matt?
Now, I got him here under false pretenses. He was expecting to stand there with a group of folks, and I had concocted a story, so he's a little surprised to be standing up here by himself. But our job in EMS is predicated on teamwork, and part of that teamwork is to ensure readiness. We make sure the, the gas tanks or fuel are filled up on the amelots, and Matt makes sure that the folks that he's working with, that their fuel tank is full. And he does that by making sure that they're well-fed. Every morning that he can, that he's not committed to an emergency call, he makes sure that he is doing a meal prep in the station. Often, it's eggs from his own chickens that he brings in, and he spends his own money on other things, and he brings them in and makes sure breakfast is done, and he's already got dinner plans in mind and is making sure that that's taken care of. He is always helpful, no matter if another unit in the station comes back and it's filthy dirty, he's out there helping the crew get back in service quicker, and you don't ever have to mention that to him, it's just innate in him that that's his helpfulness and making sure that we stay that readiness that we do. He's an avid, avid runner. We need to probably pair him with the walker here. He just signed up for a 100-mile run from Corolla to Hatteras. Matt lives in Hatteras, and his whole family is avid runners also. His daughter has been on the top of podiums, accepting stuff, and so for everything, Matt, that you do, to make sure that everybody is ready and working as a team, thank you for your dedication, and I am proud to be able to do this County Employee of the Month for you.
Thank you. Well deserved.
Chairman, we have one more presentation this morning. Drew Tierson would come forward to make that presentation.
My Chairman and Board.
Good morning.
Great to be with you at the height of hurricane season, not being here to share bad news with you, that a storm's coming our way. It is a busy time of the year out in the Atlantic, so everybody needs to be aware that storms are just starting to percolate, and it only takes one, so keep that in mind. But I'm here today to share some achievement with you made by James Wu, and so I'll ask James to come forward, he already did. How about that? It's great to have James here with us, part of our team. About a year ago, James applied to see if he could get into the Federal Emergency Management, Emergency Management Institute's Emergency Manager Advanced Academy. He was one of about 400 or so applicants for that program, prestigious program. He was selected, and about a year ago, he started a program along with 2,500, 25 other in his cohort. That program consisted of a full year of study that included policy, current policy in emergency management, contemporary issues in emergency management, program development and program assessment in emergency management, and it included four one-week periods at the Emergency Management Institute in Emmitsburg, Maryland. And he graduated with honors as part of his cohort, was able to present his paper on the Emergency Management Accreditation Program, the senior leaders from FEMA at that graduation piece of the last week he was there, and I'm just honored to be able to come forward and recognize his accomplishments as a graduate of the Federal Emergency Management's Emergency Manager Advanced Academy. James, welcome.
Wow, congratulations. That's incredible. You say 25 out of 400 and some selected? That's great.
Yeah, thank you very much.
Quite an accomplishment.
Yeah. Thank you.
Thank you.
Before we go to public comment, any of you all that received awards this morning, if you'll go right out through this door so that we can get a picture. If you have public comment this morning and you've not signed up, raise your hand and I'll recognize you. When I do, please come to the podium, state your name and where you're from. Please limit your comments to five minutes. There's a green light up on the podium that'll come on when your time begins. There's a yellow light that'll come on when you have about a minute left, and when the red light comes on, you need to conclude your remarks. First on my list, it looks like Al Brown.
Mr. Oney?
I can't read the last name. Al, from Colony Road?
From Collington Road?
Yes, sir.
Okay, yeah, that's me.
Good morning, sir.
Good morning. How are you, Commissioner? Okay, sir. First, I'd like to thank the Dare County Board of Commissioners for allowing me the opportunity to address the board members this morning. I'm addressing the board member as a newly established pickleball player with six months' experience, three of those months here in the Outer Banks. My wife and I have had the experience of My wife and I have had the experience of playing on both the indoor and outdoor courts hosted by the Dare County Recreation Center in Kill Devil Hills, and I would like to share some experiences playing in those two venues. First of all, we were amazed at how the game of pickleball raises our social capital. The social networking quickly allowed us to simulate with our local community members as we shared contact information with each other, attended social gatherings off the court, shared local attraction and dining experiences, handyman referrals, as well as traveling opportunities by taking advantage of the Dare County Center and PML Travel and Tours, just to name a few. We've actually signed up for a tour in Greece in June based on a recommendation from a pickleball counterpart. We never even knew that resource was available. Secondly, by allowing visitors to play on both indoor and outdoor courts, we've noticed a significance increase in up-tempo lending itself to an increase in demand signals for the need to expand the pickleball footprint on this side of the island. This side meaning the Kill Devil Hill side. We enjoy meeting a weekly rotation of guest players who are drawn to the pickleball courts while enjoying their vacation. That also comes with the capacity challenge. One can witness an exponential increase in players, starting on average with four at 7:30, and quickly rising to 30 by 9 o'clock. With four outdoor courts available on a typical day, it is not uncommon to observe 16 players on the courts with an average of 14 players sidelined waiting to play. According to one visitor, the local YMCA charges a daily reciprocal fee of $5 per visit for members and 15 per visit for non-members from the months of May through October, causing visitors to seek other venues to play ending up in the Dare County Rec Center. The pickleball population in the U.S. has nearly increased by 50% to an estimated population of 5 million since 2014 in comparison to a 2% increase when comparing this sport to golf. Pickleball is the fastest-growing sport in the U.S. with future aspirations of making this sport an Olympic event. The OBX Pickleball Group is sponsoring a two-day workshop this week by inviting a six-time U.S. Open champion from Arizona to teach and mentor 24 pickleball players with all costs borne out of pocket, that's $140 a ticket, by those who signed up for the workshop. The workshop was sold out. The local community continues to be represented in pickleball tournaments throughout the state of North Carolina, as well as other states, with all costs to attend those events funded by the individual players. In closing, we see an opportunity to promote an on- and off-season tourism through potential pickleball revenue, as well as fostering and raising our social capital through this quickly growing sport. I challenge the board to take some time out of your busy schedules to witness the excitement and passion of the players out on the courts. Let us continue our due diligence as we explore the opportunities that this diamond in the rough has to offer. As already witnessed this season, if we build it, they will come. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, sir.
George Barr.
Welcome this morning, Mr. Barr.
Good morning. Thank you very much for the opportunity to speak to you all. I am also, I'm the managing representative of the Outer Banks Pickleball Club, which is different than the Outer Banks Pickleball Group that you just heard from a member. And my co-manager, Charlene, is in the back there as well. We've been running the club for about 18 months now, and I'm also a member of the Dare County Recreation Committee advising you folks with Mr. Bateman, and thanks to Mr. Ross's appointment several years ago. So I wanted to speak briefly on the capital budget that you're going to be considering later on, and specifically with some pickleball stuff, but also in general about the capital budget in the time I have allocated. I won't, you've heard some of the statistics on pickleball. When Parade Magazine has an issue on it, you know it has arrived in America, and that it needs to be addressed by municipalities everywhere, and that's what's happening. And I want to first thank you folks for making Walker Park possible for pickleball this year. I have handouts there, there for you. But this Walker Park up in Monkeys looked like this about four or five months ago, and was due for a resurfacing and repurposing. There were two tennis courts there, all right? And thanks to Tim White and Bobby's support, I'm sure, as well, we ended up in about eight weeks creating this at Walker Park, which is four pickleball courts dedicated, the first one's in Dare County, and they're in the space of one of those tennis courts. So I just wanted to give the board an idea of what the kind of space required. Basically, eight courts is two tennis courts, all right, when you're going forward. And in the capital budget package, I note that there is a provision for nearly half a million dollars in support of pickleball authorized, or at least so far authorized by this board, and, and I wanted to say a huge thank you. A year ago, I couldn't imagine that, and I think the board has stepped up in, not only with the 25 million in capital expenditures for much-needed improvements throughout the county on other athletic facilities, but also to support pickleball. I think the plan says two courts. I believe that that was probably not, that was probably inadvertent in, in the plan because we can get eight courts for the kind of money in full compliance with all municipal requirements. And I think the, and I, the rest of my little package that you got here sort of, sort of proves that this is what Wilson, North Carolina, is doing right now, 4.2 million-dollar pickleball and tennis complex, of which would accommodate 32 pickleball courts, and six, six of those are, right now, six of those are dedicated tennis courts, but in terms of space and pouring concrete and everything, it's the equivalent of 32, plus indoors, plus parking, plus bathrooms and everything. So if you divide that by a cost per court, it's a lot different than two courts for $450,000. So I think we need to look at that going forward as we get into it and see what we can get for our money, because we need more courts, not necessarily a lot of amenities, because we're, we're just backed up, as, as you've already heard. Finally, I have the cost estimates that were used in Henrico County in, in Virginia on the last page, and they just built eight courts for less than we're allocating for two in the budget package. So I think, you know, all I, all I would ask is that we don't lock ourselves into saying, no, we had two, let's use the money wisely and, and make as much as we can. So number one, a big thank you for all the support. This is an incredible moment for pickleball. We always would love more, but we know there's many other athletic and non-athletic priorities for the board as well, and we appreciate this real good show of support. The one thing I would ask you to consider is possibly, before approving the capital outlays for recreation today, is the Recreation Committee, on which I serve, has never seen this proposal, all right? We have not had a meeting in the time that the architects came back and we've had a chance. And if, if we're to advise, maybe the people from, other people on the committee beside myself would like to have some input into what they think about it, and, and maybe have something that you could vote on next time around, because we do have a meeting coming up in a couple of weeks. And so that's just about my time up, I think, and I thank you for your, your kind attention. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Barr.
Next is Sandra Briggman. What was your last name, ma'am?
Briggman.
Thank you, Ms. Briggman.
Good morning, and thank you for allowing me the opportunity to speak with you today. First, allow me to introduce myself. My name is Sandy Briggman, and I've been a Dare County resident since January of 1997. I am a wife, mother of three adult children who were nine, eight, and seven when we moved here, now a grandmother to local children. I'm a volunteer at a local church and a guardian ad litem since 2003. Guardian ad litem, if you're not familiar with that program, is a national and statewide program in which volunteers advocate for children in court. I've also volunteered as a soccer coach in Dare County and a soccer referee in Dare County, even after my children outgrew the program. The key word here is volunteer. I'm extremely concerned that the budget this year, as far as I know, and correct me if I'm wrong, does not include improvement toward adult recreation. I find this hard to believe in, and, and actually am ashamed of myself for not speaking up prior to today. I understand that there may be some funding talked about for the future, but that this is not a priority and may be considered a want instead of a need and not scheduled for this year. In 1997, the Kill Devil Hills Rec Center was here, and the programs were limited. The focus was on children, as it should have been. Today, there has been some improvement in the youth programs, but for adults, not nearly enough. In my early years living here, the only adult activity at KDH Center were the outside tennis courts, of which I don't play tennis. It is imperative that adults have an avenue for physical activity. I know the Baum Center offers some, and I believe the Manio Center or facility does as well, but that is limited to seniors. We need activities for adults, adults who work and are starting families, and as adults who are semi-retired or retired. The benefits are physical, mental, and emotional. When I learned that there were people playing this unknown sport of pickleball, I was intrigued. It took some persuading by other players, even my husband, to get me to even try this strange-named sport. I actually played my first pickleball game in a cul-de-sac with some experienced players. I was hooked. Yes, it was a cul-de-sac. My son-in-law, and he's in his 40s, loves to play basketball, and even though there are carts, courts at the rec center, he's extremely limited in his opportunity to play. I know a local police officer was allowed to open up the KDH Rec Center in the evenings for the guys to play. You know, why is that? Why can't volunteers be allowed to attend to the KDH Rec Center so it can be open to the public on nights and weekends when adults can participate? Why are the citizens of Dare County limited to Monday to Friday, 9 to 5, for adult recreation and physical recreation, and even then, more restricted? The same citizens who contribute financially to this county and volunteer in this community. I'm astonished that in my 25 years of living here, how little progress has been made for recreation for adults. There is an opportunity here for off-season adult sport competitions, and we're not able to provide adequate courts for those money-generating events. Why is that? Is it not time to allocate funding, which would be minimal compared to other projects? I understand that this year's budget is about to be approved and that this budget has been set forth in phases. I also understand that the topic I am concerned about, adult recreation, but specifically pickleball, is not funded or part of the capital improvement planning. As an aging adult, I'm requesting that you, our leaders, take action now, not four or five years down the road, but now to address this issue. The adult programs seem to always get pushed aside or at best, second or last. I implore you to give this group an opportunity to sit down with you and discuss the needs before the budget puts the age group, the aging age group, off once again. As a side note, have any of you been to the ladies' room at the rec center? Well, I have this past winter, and I was appalled and ashamed at the condition of that restroom. I was embarrassed at its condition, and you should be as well. Take a tour. I have no idea what the men's room looks like, but I know in the ladies' room, there's mold growing up the walls or huge chunks of wallpaper peeling off. The amount of money coming into this county, it really wouldn't take much to fund more adult activities, repair current facilities, or better yet, provide a complex to serve adult pickleball, basketball, soccer, and other sports. Hosting competitions would generate revenue to offset that expense and would provide income to other local businesses. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Briggman. Dave Briggman. Welcome this morning, Mr. Briggman.
Ladies and gentlemen, thank you for your time. My name is Dave Briggman. My wife, lovely lady you just heard, and I owned and operated a motel in Kitty Hawk for 15 years. I'm a resident of Dare County for 25, and we still own that property. So I know something about tourism. During my time operating motel, just as a side note, the company, not me, my company paid over $400,000 in occupancy taxes and property taxes, so I sort of think of myself as a stake, stakeholder. My motel business before COVID was dead during the winter months, November through March, dead. Those that did come were retirees, empty nesters, singles, maybe a few homeschoolers. Problem was, and is, there wasn't much to do during that time of year. Maybe a walk on the beach, maybe surf casts, but then what? What is needed is more year-round attractions that attract more off-season tourists and also give the residents here more things to do. Adult recreation is one of the areas in which our county is lacking. Do we have a public county-town-owned swimming pool? Do we have more than a handful of tennis and pickleball courts? Do we have our own rec center gym open on weekends, nights, or during the summer when the tourists and locals could use it? The answer to all these is no. As I said in the movie and you heard earlier, build it, they will come. My interest in particular is pickleball, as you've, we're kind of beating you up on that subject. I forget the strange name, it's, as you heard, is the fastest-growing sport, participation sport, in the United States, by far. Five million players and growing. But how about here, on the Outer Banks? We have over 300 active players, 300. Most live over on the beach, where there are three outdoor courts, and I'll say zero to six indoor courts. I say zero because not all the courts of the rec center are available. Often, unused gym equipment is left on the courts, preventing them from being used, and the courts usually aren't available, available in the evenings, or at all on weekends or the summer. Let's see where we stand. I recently visited Ocean City in New Jersey. That was a youth, a youth family vacation spot. The city has a permanent, a permanent population of 11,000 people, about, or less than a third of Dare County. Ocean City has 16 dedicated, not shared with other sports, pickleball courts, 16. On the beach here, we have one. And we have some over in Monkeys. Ocean City did build it, and I came, and a lot of other people came. Not only do residents need more facilities, but additional facilities could significantly help with the off-season tourist industry. It's a no-brainer. For instance, tournaments draw hundreds of participants and spectators. We also have one, we have one of these tournaments scheduled for early November. Motels and house occupancies could increase, bringing more money to Dare County. More restaurants could stay open. There would be more year-round jobs. We can't wait two, three, four years down the road. The county has one of the highest revenues per resident ratios in North Carolina. We seem to have no problem spending capital money on other things. Now is the time to change the budget. Now is the time to build new recreation facilities and pay the employees to keep those facilities open. Let's not fall farther behind other similar tourist areas. Build it. They will come, and we're already here. Thank you. Thank you.
Scott Morton. Did he say Morton?
Morton, M-O-R-T-O.
Thank you, Mr. Morton.
Thank you, Commissioners, for letting me speak this morning. I'm here for my third time to talk about access to existing facilities for adults. Adult recreation in general, I think, in Dare County, as we've heard from previous people speaking, is at a minimum right now. And there are many things that we can do with existing facilities that would take very little money, both capital and operating, that could improve the situation today. All it would take would be for you to say, this is inexpensive, let's do it. Example number one would be opening up the youth rec center on the weekends for adults to play pickleball, basketball, volleyball, any other sport you might be able to do on an indoor court. To operate that facility for three hours on Saturday and three hours on Sunday would be less than $15,000 a year. You're getting a 40% to 50% increase in the use of the facility, 40% to 50% increase in the use of the facility by adults for less than $15,000 a year. If you don't consider that a bargain, it's a shame. Who here amongst you would say that $15,000 for a 40% increase is inappropriate? Bobby, do we have $15,000 we could spend on something like this?
We've got four votes.
You've got millions, gentlemen, millions in excess funds, and all this would take would be $15,000. I hope that you'll address that immediately. It's something we could start at any time, next week if we wanted to. The other thing that would be addressed, both the pickleball and other community issues of tourism, would be to increase the number of pickleball courts at the rec center location. Eight more courts could be added there for less than $15,000 as well. So for a total of $30,000, you could have a huge increase in adult recreational capability, a huge increase in tourism, a huge increase in the use of hotels, restaurants, other recreational facilities. It's peanuts to our current budget, and yet it doesn't show up on a line item anywhere. So this is my third time to talk about adult recreation. I've been advised to go to the Recreation Committee. I've attended those meetings. I've attended as many as some of the members have, and I haven't attended them all. I've been pointed onto a subcommittee to look at adult recreation and utilization of existing facilities that a subcommittee never met. So here I am, making my plea directly to you, trying to skip the middleman maybe, but this is very minimal funds for a huge payout. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Morton.
Welcome, Mr. Garber.
Good morning, Chairman, Commissioners, County Manager. I'm Scott Garber. I live in Collington Harbor. I'd like to applaud your CIP Committee for the details and agree and acknowledge that things in Dare County need freshening up, but I would respectfully like to challenge your decision about parks and recreation, and more specifically, the elimination of a new gym and turf for soccer fields. You brought in an outside architect firm from Rocky Mount, North Carolina, to listen to Dare County staff members, the needs of the Parks and Recreation Department, but your committee removed probably the two most important items of the six priorities that were listed at the committee meeting in less than 15 minutes. So I ask you, Chairman and Commissioners, before you vote on item 15 today of your agenda today for Parks and Recreation, will you listen to the county residents before you vote? Would you take the time before this vote to listen to another Parks and Recreation Director from Wilson, North Carolina, that is willing to share their success story and how they use sports and tourism to build their programs for their Parks and Recreation Department and their community? Because if you vote today for the Parks and Recreation Plan that is currently on the table, you are not addressing any of the most important needs in our county, and your plan is not until 2028. Think about the businesses during the off-season, during non-peak periods, where recreation events can provide tourism dollars. We all agree that tourism dollars is very important for the Outer Banks. I have 208 signatures here from our adult community that say, "A gym is a need and not a want." There are a family of soccer adults that will tell you that the turf fields is a need and not a want for their adult and youth programs. If you take the time to listen to what David Lee, the Parks and Recreation Director from Wilson, North Carolina, who will come here and speak with you and share with you and tell you that sports tourism dollars will put our Recreation Department on the map as a destination for all sports teams, soccer tournaments, baseball tournaments, basketball pickleball tournaments, softball, marathon events, they are all tax revenue generators, but they all are not addressed here in your plan today. Dare County is not just an ocean destination as it was many years ago. People want to be healthier and live longer lives. Sports, exercise, and staying active and social is a conduit to a happier community. Sports teams will fill local businesses during their stay here. New sport facilities and sports fields are missing in your plan. $24 million allocated towards recreation is a positive sign, but is it money spent wisely on what is really needed? Parks and Recreation Department has been impacted by growth. None of the six priorities of the Parks and Recreation listed on your meeting on August 30th addresses the issue of growth in our county. I hope you listened to the people here today and the 208 recreation adults that signed the petition to tell you that more is needed for Parks and Recreation Department in Dare County. Priority list of items for Parks and Recreation capital improvement planning are in your control, and a lot of us will be watching to see if you make a new gym facility and sports fields among those items that you will vote on. In Wilson, North Carolina, there was a Commissioner, a Tourism Director, and a Parks and Recreation Director all traveled down to Florida to understand what the fastest-growing sport in America was all about. They got back home, and in the scheduled committee meeting, it took the Wilson Commissioners 10 minutes to vote and pass to build the largest tennis and pickleball complex in North Carolina for $4.2 million with a population of 49,000 people. Take the time to understand why and hear their story. Thank you for your time, for my time, and I would like to thank the Chairman, Commissioner, for all that you do, because we know you have big challenges in Dare County. We all appreciate your hard work. Please listen to your adult community and understand the needs are now and not in 2028. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Garber.
Welcome this morning, Mr. Batten.
Good morning, Commissioners. My name is Jeff Fountain. I retired here five years-
Did you say Fountain?
Fountain is in Fountain of Youth.
Okay, well, I thought you said Batten.
I like to say that.
I guess I need my hernias. Fountain, okay.
So I retired five years ago, moved here from South Carolina. I've been coming here since the early 80s. My parents retired here. I have two sisters that live here, one that's raised a family from scratch. So Outer Banks is my home. When I moved here, I retired from the game of basketball. If any of you play basketball, it was my passion, and I played it my entire life, but about the time I retired, I said, "These old joints are starting to hurt. I'm going to have to find something to replace basketball." And a friend said, "Well, check out this pickleball group." So I did, five years ago. Today, I play pickleball two or three times a week, and it's a blast. It's as fun to me as basketball was. It's competitive, it's fun. I get beat by gray-haired ladies in their 70s. They're really good. Kids are out there. It's a sport for everyone. Recently, the, oh, also, I've played every sport you can imagine in my lifetime. This sport is such a community builder. I have met more people in the first year playing pickleball than I could have imagined. And the structure of the game, for those of you who don't know, is you don't come with your buddy and beat everyone. You put your racket in a queue, and you get matched up with that racket, and whoever wins, those two winners split sides, and the two new players come in and match up with them. So we're playing pickleball for three or four hours, and we're playing probably with 10, 15 partners and meeting a lot of people. It's a great community builder for a town. Recently, Dare County opened up the rec center to visitors, as was mentioned. If you go by there in the morning, you'll see 30-plus people, half of those are visitors. We're meeting visitors from all around the country. I suspect as word of mouth gets out and as this sport continues to grow, this time next year, there will be 10 to 20 times the amount of visitors that we're seeing initially today, assuming the capacity is there for them. Scott mentioned the weekends at the rec center. Couple of us went to the Recreation Committee early spring and to talk about, hey, if there's a staffing issue, we got 300 pickleball players, we can get volunteers. And we talked about it, and they just seemed to be concerned about liability. This is something new. Nothing ever happened. We know of four communities, just from the pickleball players traveling around, that have volunteer programs that staff, support their staffing. Allentown, they've mentioned, Ocean City, Naples, Florida, and what was it, Manassas? There's plenty more. I would like to offer, if the $15,000 to cover the weekend is a struggle, another option is I would offer to set up a telecom Zoom session with some of those communities that are involved in that program with Dare County admin to explore that and learn how they did that and set that up, and it's successful. So I'll have my phone number and whatnot, I'd be glad to do that. So with that said, thank you for your time and look forward to working with you.
Thank you, Mr. Fountain.
That's everyone that I have signed up. Would anyone else like to speak at public comment this morning? Yes, sir. If you'd come forward and state your name and where you're from, please.
Hi, my name is Everett Fifeield, and I just wanted to make a few brief comments about the number 17 that's on your agenda, about a road addition. I live in Manio here on Concord Court, which is off of Arbor Drive, which is right off of Scumpernong, and we just have a short cul-de-sac there. And all the people there, I've lived there since 2004, but all the people that live there we're not aware of that it's really considered a private road and not under the maintenance of the DOT. And so, you know, over the last several years, I've tried to find out what avenues we need to do to try to get it added, and finally got in touch with a gentleman in Elizabeth City DOT, and he gave me the right paperwork to submit it to you. We get, it's just a short cul-de-sac right off of Arbor. They routinely pave Arbor right there, and we have our mail delivery comes into the cul-de-sac and out. We have garbage collection that comes into the cul-de-sac and out, and I'd just like to, I'm going to request that you consider that to be added so we can get it maintained with the rest of the road system. And I'm almost ashamed to say that I'm not aware of what pickleball is, but I think I'm going to find out. Thank you.
You said you live in a court?
Pardon me?
You said you live in a court?
Yes, I live in-
You might be able to put a field back there in that court.
Yeah, there you go.
Yes, ma'am.
Hello, I'm Alana Harrison. I live down in Hatters, and I actually did read on the news that pickleball is the fastest-growing sport in the country, so for what that's worth. I was shocked. They couldn't think of a better name, though. I mean, like, whatever. But I wanted to comment really quickly. I don't know if y'all are aware of blue catfish. They are an invasive species. You think the feral cats are a problem. They have taken over, they are native to the Mississippi Valley, and they were introduced into Virginia for recreational purposes. And they have traveled down the rivers, and they have traveled into the Albemarle Sound, and they are taking over essentially. In a 75-square-mile radius in Virginia on the river, they ate 2.5 million blue crabs. These will eat anything. They're eating our stripers, they're eating our red drum, they're eating our flounder, they're eating our crabs, our shrimp, everything. They're nondiscriminatory, and they get massive. And we're starting to see a problem in Manio. And I don't know, like, if there's anything y'all can do. We've been trying to get the Marine Fisheries Commission to do something as well, but it, I don't know. Our water should be salty enough that they're not here, but they're here. They're a freshwater species, so they're coming in the crab pots. They're right outside these sand flats. I'm from Hatters, so our water's salty enough. This won't be an issue, hopefully. But the crabs, this is really getting bad. In Maryland and Virginia, they're eating all the crabs, so it's driving the crab market up. Anybody have a restaurant? They know the crab prices have been insane. Blue catfish are a driver. So we need to start, I don't know, if an ounce of prevention is worth a pound of cure. So maybe we can encourage some blue catfish tournaments. They get up to like 200 pounds. They're really cool, but they're invasive, and we need to get them out before they take over, because they're like Elizabeth City and that section of Albemarle Sound, they are super thick. And now we're hearing in Manio, so. And I'm very excited to see the dredge came to town. Maybe it can come to Hatters. Yeah, cool. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Harrison.
Any other public comment this morning? Seeing none here, any public comment from Buxton?
No comment from Buxton.
With that, Mr. Chairman, we move on to-
Before we move on, Mr. Alton, for those of you who have made public comment this morning, we will respond to that at the end of the meeting, so stick around. You guys retired. You don't have anything else to do. County Manager?
Yes, sir. That brings us to item five on the agenda. This is a public hearing on a request to close a portion of the street at Seagull Street in Rodanthe. Noah presented this to you, I think, at the previous meeting, and we talked about it there. In order to move forward with that, we have to have a public hearing, and this is the time for a public hearing. So ladies and gentlemen, this is a public hearing to consider the closing of a portion, the paved portion of Seagull Street in Rodanthe. There's no one signed up. Is there anyone here like to speak to that issue? Is there anyone in Buxton that'd like to speak to that issue?
Sure, I hope so.
No comment from Buxton.
So without public comment, we close the public hearing.
No comment from Buxton.
Right. Again, this is that stretch right as you come into Merlot Beach, and it will allow the folks at the entrance of Merlot Beach to move their houses a little bit closer to Highway 12 to buy them some time there in Rodanthe. Noah's here. If you have questions beyond what you remember and what I've just told you, otherwise, it's ready for your action.
A pleasure to the board.
Motion to adjourn.
Okay, there's a motion on the proposal by Commissioner Bateman, and it's been seconded by the Vice Chair. The floor is open for further discussion. Hearing none, then those in favor of this motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose like sign. Motion carries unanimous. Thank you, Noah.
Thanks, Noah. Good job.
Great job.
Mr. Chairman, this is item six on the agenda, and this is the appointment of the Deputy Tax Collector, and Misa Westcott Godfrey is here and is recommended to the board for that position, subject to your approval, and if so, then Cheryl will swear her in.
Please proceed, County Manager.
Well, y'all need to take action to appoint, and then she can be sworn in.
Well, okay. Move to appoint.
There's a motion on the floor, then to appoint by Vice Chair.
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner Bateman. Further discussion. Hearing none, those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose like sign. Motion carries unanimous. Now you can proceed, Mrs. Clerk. Now you can proceed, Mrs. Clerk.
Congratulations.
Congratulations. Good job. Once you sign that, go collect some money for him.
Item seven on the agenda, Mr. Chairman, is the annual settlement of the tax collector.
County Manager?
Oh, sorry.
We need to take a five-minute break real quick, if you don't mind. I'm going to call the Dare County Board of Commissioners meeting back to order and turn it over to the County Manager.
Mr. Chairman, we're at item seven on the agenda. This is the annual settlement of the tax collector, and our tax collector, Beth Keyhoff, is here to make that presentation.
Good morning, Ms. Becky.
Good morning, gentlemen.
I bet you have fabulous news to tell us.
Yeah, actually, I do. I'm going to make this very short, very sweet, because, you know, things have been going on this morning. I'm here to give you the settlement for the 2021 tax year. Our total tax levy for the year was $65,967,292.57. Out of that, we collected 99.63% of it. We only have an outstanding uncollected as of June 30th, which was $245,02956. I reran the numbers again last night, because we know, just because June 30th comes does not mean we stop collecting. As of August 31st, we are down, we're up to 99.71%. Our outstanding debt for 2021 is $188,103.51. So, and as you can see on page two of your report, at the very bottom, it tells you how much of all of that outstanding we have is uncollectible by me, by us within the office. There's the unknowns, which if, obviously, we don't have a known owner, there's nothing for us to collect against. We have active bankruptcies and active foreclosures. In the Dare County system, in our office, what we do for foreclosures is if anyone is two years behind on their taxes, and we've not been able to reach them in any way, shape, or form, we do phone calls, we do letters, we search them on Facebook, we do everything we possibly can to find people and work out payment plans and payment arrangements. We do not want to take anybody's property, do not want to foreclose on them. So the only way they end up in foreclosures, if we have absolutely, we're at our very last, you know, we have nothing else left to do but to send them off to foreclosure. And a lot of those people, once they get out there, contact us finally, and we can work something out for the most part. But I just wanted to let you know that I have a fantastic staff. I just have to say that. Let me introduce them to you guys so they can all get back to the office. Stand up, ladies. Y'all know Misa, she's our new Deputy Tax Collector. The one on the end is Ricky Burris, who's our Occupancy and Food Administrator, Food and Beverage Tax Administrator. And next to Misa is Corinne Etheridge, she is my legal assistant. And Paula Harris is our tax person in the office. So I just wanted to make sure you met all of them and know the hard work that they all do. They are on the phone constantly.
Becky, I'm sorry to interrupt you, but I am astounded at the effort that you guys put forth. I mean, looking at these statistics and everything, there's not enough hours in a day for you?
No, there are not. We are to the point, our office, we don't do a lot of data entry anymore. A lot of everything we do now is electronic, which helps tremendously. The entire staff works on collections. They make phone calls, they send letters. We do as much as we possibly can to reach out and contact people. And we have, if you look on the sheet on the third page, in, right now, at this point, we have about 250 people in payment plans. Yeah, I'm sorry, I don't have my glasses on, can't see the numbers. But about 250 active payment plans. We do maybe between 500 to 600 over the course of a year. We also pay payment plans on people in the, for the Roanoke Island Water Assessment. Even though the 10 years was up, I still have years left to collect on those that people weren't paying. So everybody who had not paid up until that point is now on a payment plan. So we do intend to collect 100% for the Roanoke Island Water Assessment. Also, our foreclosure attorney, if you look at the numbers on that, for this year, he has collected $122,286.54. That costs us nothing. All the funds, all the fees that are used, that the foreclosure attorney charges, by state statute, what he's allowed to charge, is added back into the parcel. So the person buying the parcel when we foreclose on the property, or if the person gets it out of foreclosure by paying it, they pay all of that. It's no fee whatsoever to the county. So again, I applaud you for hiring a foreclosure attorney, an outside foreclosure attorney, taking all the politics out of it. I think that's pretty much it, unless you guys have some questions about anything.
Excellent job. Incredible work, Becky and your staff.
Thank you.
Incredible work. Just unbelievable.
All right, thank you very much. Yeah, the next part is that you would need to charge me to collect for the 2022 taxes.
Need a motion?
Do you need a motion?
Yes, sir.
So moved?
It's a motion on the floor by Commissioner Couch. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by the Vice Chair. Any further discussion? Hearing none, those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Post like sign. Motion carries unanimous.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Have a good day.
Excellent work. Chairman, that brings us to item eight. This is a presentation on the Regallo Museum, and John Harris and others are here for that presentation.
John, good morning and welcome, and thank you for your patience in sitting there diligently.
Thanks, guys.
Good morning, Chairman Woodard and Dare County Commissioners. Thank you all for all that you do for Dare County citizens. You're the most go-get-it-and-fix-it board that I know of, and I really, I really appreciate your action on every issue that comes up. You go after it, and you find solutions, and you fix it. Thank you.
Thank you, John.
We've got more Dare Aviation history for you today, real quickly. This is Bill Yvonne, who is writing a book on the Regallos, Francis and Gertrude Regallo. We formed the Regallo Foundation in 1992, with one of the objectives being to build a museum. The museum will tell the story of the invention of the Regallo Wing, and that wing led to hang gliding, paragliding, sport parachuting, delta kites, stunt kites, and kiteboarding that are all regional activities and around the world. The museum will tell the history of all these sports. As you know, the Regallos owned a house in southern shores for many years and became permanent residents of Dare County in 1972, after retiring from NASA. Our, our board members, some of our board members are with us today. We have Susie Walters and Sandra Allen and G.W. Meadows. Also on the board is Bruce Weaver and Carol Regallo Sparks. We have been talking to North Carolina State Parks about this project for about five years. It's been interrupted by COVID like so many other projects. In 2018, we worked out a site plan for a site in Jockeys Ridge State Park, and we worked out architectural renderings of, or the concept of the museum. The foundation's proposal to North Carolina Parks basically is if you give us a long-term lease at no cost, we'll raise the money to build the building and operate it. And we, we estimate that cost roughly now, we don't have any plans to go on yet, but about $7 million is what we think it's going to take to make it happen. We meet next week with State Parks on the lease. They'll be here in town. So we need the board's support for, of the museum and the long-term lease with North Carolina State Parks. Thank you, Billy.
Sure.
Welcome this morning, Billy.
Thank you. I'll try to be quick about this. Francis and Gertrude Regallo, for those of you who don't know, they invented the first flexible wing in 1948. Their remarkable invention was a wing with no rigid structures at all, no spars or stiffeners, but it maintains its shape in flight, producing lift like conventional rigid wings. That flexible wing evolved into many forms of flying, from hang gliders and paragliders to weight-shift ultralights, lightsport aircraft, delta kites, stunt kites, modern parachutes, and most recently, kiteboard kites. This family of wings has allowed millions of people from all over the world to enjoy the thrill, adventure, and challenge of flight in its most pure form. And where do I point? To advance the slide, yeah. Doesn't seem to be.
At the screen.
The screen. There we go. All right. Regallo was born in Sanger, California in 1912, and received his graduate degree in aeronautical engineering from Stanford in 1935, and went to work in the wind tunnels at the NACA right up here in Hampton, Virginia, where he actually met and chatted with Orville Wright in the early 1940s. During World War II, as the NACA was doing drag cleanup studies of all the aircraft that saw combat, Regallo saw that aircraft were getting heavier, faster, more complicated, harder to fly, and way more expensive. He thought it just wasn't fair that only millionaires in the military had access to aviation. He was a huge proponent of personal aviation, privately-owned aircraft, and he thought everyone should be able to fly. His design idea was this, he thought, wouldn't it be great if you could drive your car to the outskirts of town and unfold a wing out of the trunk and fly away? He started studying the idea of foldable wings, and at first, he thought it would have to have a boom and a mast like a sailboat sail, but he realized that if he did it with the right shape, basically a triangular shape, if you make the light, right length of lines and the right amount of weight underneath it, this thing would hold the airfoil shape and glide. So he and Gertrude worked on this idea at home on their own time. He actually built a small wind tunnel in their house, and she sewed the first ones up out of abandoned kitchen curtains. That's the first one in that slide there. And they got it flying successfully in August of 1948. And Regallo knew immediately what the possibilities were. Writing, actually wrote this, "Imagine the thrill of carrying such a wing to the top of a mountain and gliding into the valley below." Now, because he was a civil servant working for the federal government, his ideas belonged to the government, so he took his wing to the bosses at NASA, or at the NACA, but they didn't show any interest. And it allowed the Regallos to patent the flexible wing. They received the patent in 1951. This patent describes many different forms of the wing, including using stiffeners for different purposes, so they weren't all completely flexible. He even mentions rectangular ram air canopies, so all of our modern parachutes owe something to this. Now, as a way, the original wing flew as a glider, but it also made a fantastic kite. It had no sticks that you could break, and it could be rigged with two lines and flown aerobatically like our modern stunt kites. So as a way to illustrate the concept, to try to get what he called real aeronautical interest in the idea, they went into the kite business. And he and Gertrude sold these wings as toy kites. For 10 years, they sold these things while Regallo continued his work at the NACA, and he continued in vain to try and get interest, real aeronautical interest in the idea. In fact, he got ribbed a lot at work for the kite business. How's the kite business, Rog? So all that changed when Sputnik happened. The space race was on. And in 1959, it was actually Werner von Braun, the famous rocket engineer. He visited the Langley Facility on a regular annual inspection, and he just happened to see Regallo demonstrate one of these little gliders like he had 1,000 times before. And what von Braun saw was the possibility of recovering rocket booster engines and radio-controlled gliding them back to land. And at this time, you've got to remember that von Braun was a rock star, the guy was the face of the space race. So him giving some credibility to this little kite idea, basically, the floodgates opened, and the federal government spent something like $160 million in the 1960s doing flexible wing research for all sorts of applications. That booster recovery, it showed promise, but the rockets were getting too powerful too quickly, and they were too far downrange. So that idea didn't work out, but it did help to open the floodgates. I'm going to go through these pretty quickly. This was called a FLEEP. It was a flying jeep. Basically, it was a short takeoff and landing cargo and personnel carrier. Eventually, this would become what we call ultralight aircraft today. This application is a, they called it a precision drop glider. You could actually, it carried cargo behind a helicopter, you could tow it, and it would, like you drag a boat behind your truck, it increased the payload you could carry, plus you could cut the rope and radio-controlled glide it down and supply troops without having to commit an aircraft to potentially hostile landing areas. The Golden Knights actually flew these things. They jumped, live-jumped flexible wings in the 1960s. These were some of the first really maneuverable parachutes. Now, this unpowered wing was a glider. It was towed as high as 12,000 feet and free-flown down. It was flown by the astronauts. Buzz Aldrin flew this, Neil Armstrong, Gus Grissom. And the reason they were training astronauts to fly flexible wings is that the biggest application they looked at was to recover spacecraft. On paper, both the Gemini and Apollo programs were supposed to be recovered by what was called a paraglider. And the idea was fairly simple. You pack that thing up like a parachute. Now, that is a completely flexible wing. It packs up like a parachute, you put the guys in space, they do their mission, re-enter the atmosphere and deploy this thing, but now they got something they can fly, they can control it, and land it on land. And the astronauts loved the idea. They were our best test pilots. Even though the tests were positive, the early tests, it fell behind schedule for a whole bunch of reasons, and Kennedy's mandate to get to the moon by the end of the decade trumped the program. And eventually, they gave up on the idea and settled for parachutes. But the reason I tell this whole story is that if you were paying attention to the space race in the 1960s, you knew what a Regallo wing was. It was in popular science and popular mechanics. And pictures like this one of the FLEEP inspired would-be amateur engineers all over the world saying, that's simple, I could build one of those. And that's what happened. Hang gliding really took off. By the 1970s, this is actually on Jockeys Ridge, by the early 1970s, hang gliding was hugely popular with would-be pilots building their own Regallo wings, and the consistent wind and soft sand of Jockeys Ridge made it a perfect place for the fledgling sport. This is actually Regallo on Jockeys Ridge. He was well aware of Jockeys Ridge and came down and experimented with completely flexible wings there in the late 1960s. When he retired from NASA in 1970 and moved here in '72, he started flying hang gliders on Jockeys Ridge when he was 62 years old. And when the dunes were threatened with development, that famous story, he was part of the effort to save them. He called Jockeys Ridge a natural wind laboratory and actually advocated for a wind research facility to be affiliated with the park. You know, this was during the big energy crisis, and wind power was being studied, and he advocated for that, to be a part of it. So he was a big part of Jockeys Ridge early on. And Jockeys Ridge was also the site of one of the first national hang gliding meets. This is 1973. Over 100 pilots from all over the country came. And that meet continues today, the Hang Gliding Spectacular every May. It's the longest continually-held hang gliding competition in the world. Modern hang gliders have evolved into sophisticated soaring aircraft capable of flights measured in hours and hundreds of miles. Powered hang gliders today are classified as lightsport aircraft, and they're a staple of affordable aviation. Modern paragliders are completely flexible wings, much like what Regallo originally envisioned. And powered paragliders are probably as close as we got to that original dream of being able to unfold a wing out of the trunk of your car. All of our stunt and delta kites that we fly on Jockeys Ridge and all over the place down here, they owe something to the original concept of the flexi flight, the flexi kite, as do modern parachutes, like I mentioned earlier. And, and again, kiteboard kites is one of the latest adoptions of these flexible wings. And I, I think it could be argued that we see more variations of flexible wings on a regular basis here on the Outer Banks than anywhere else in the world. The Regallo Foundation, I won't bother to read the whole slide, but it was established in 1992 as a nonprofit 501(c)(3) with the objective of telling the Regallo story as well as trying to establish this museum we've been talking about. The foundation hired a Oak Studio Architecture in 2018 to do site analysis and conceptual drawings for a museum to be located in Jockeys Ridge State Park. Three sites were analyzed in a number of parameters, including environmental impact, infrastructure logistics, and aesthetics. Site two was chosen, based primarily on its minimal impact to the park and being adjacent to existing parking and the visitor's center. These are the drawings. They sort of speak for themselves. That would be the entrance to the museum. If you're familiar with the park where the hang gliding school is, this site is located behind the existing hang gliding school, so this is what you would see as you approach it. There's an observation deck off the south end that will be tall enough to see the sand dunes, and it's, the ramp structure will allow for people, patrons, to walk up and around. There will be exhibits along all the walls, and then we'll have full-scale flexible wings, different kinds hanging in that open atrium. And one, one quick reminder, the Regallo Foundation's most successful fundraising event has been the Brew Tag. If you're not familiar with it, it's a celebration of flight and beer where teams compete to fly an empty mini keg off a 20-foot tower. It's great fun, and it's back on after a two-year hiatus. So October 22nd, we'll be at the Soundside Event Site in Agghead with the Brew Tag. And just in closing, I think Jockeys Ridge State Park is the ideal location for a museum to honor the Regallos and their invention, and we hope you'll adopt the resolution presented today. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bowen.
That's great, guys. That was great.
Very good presentation.
Yeah.
They told me I had 10 minutes.
You have a resolution for us? Bobby, you want to read it?
Whereas Francis and Gertrude Regallo, longtime residents of Dare County.
Whereas Francis and Gertrude Regallo, longtime residents of Dare County, created the flexible wing in nineteen forty-eight, which played a part in the moon race and led to the hang glider, paraglider, sport parachutes, delta kites, stunt kites, and kiteboarding kites. And whereas the Regallos conducted flight experiments at Jockeys Ridge, and whereas a museum has been proposed to commemorate the Regallos' achievements and to help educate the world about their invention and how it made personal inexpensive flight available to people around the world. And whereas the proposed museum is envisioned to contain twelve thousand square feet of space, including exhibits that tell the Regallo story, the history of hang gliding, paragliding, kiting, and kiteboarding, a theater, and a gift shop. The museum will appeal to visitors eager for family-friendly education and entertainment. And whereas this multimillion dollar project will be fully funded through private donors that want to make this vision a reality, completed and operated at no additional cost to taxpayers. And whereas the ideal location for this museum is in Jockeys Ridge State Park, at an already identified site adjacent to the visitor parking area, which is known nationally as a soaring center and where over fifty years of free flight history have occurred, and as the site of the oldest continuously held hang gliding competition in the world. And whereas Dare County adopts this resolution to acknowledge its support of the proposed Regallo Museum and its positive impact in telling the story of the Regallos and free flight at Jockeys Ridge State Park as an asset to the county and the state of North Carolina, therefore, be it resolved, the Dare County Board of Commissioners supports the Regallo Foundation's request to the state of North Carolina to make this educational facility a reality on state-owned land located at Jockeys Ridge State Park, Nag's Head, North Carolina, and to immediately establish a lease agreement this the sixth day of September two thousand twenty-two.
All right. Thank you, Bobby. Is the resolution on the floor? It's a pleasure of the board.
Motion, sir.
There's a motion on the floor by Commissioner Bateman and Commissioner Ross, I mean Tobin. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by the vice chairman. Any further discussion?
Just, just a observation. Thank you for saying Regallo. Gertrude was much of his success as he was. It tends to focus a lot on him. It's just like Catherine Wright with the Wrights. She was instrumental. Thanks, fellas.
Yeah, this is very definitely Francis Ann Gertrude Regallo. Her name is on the patent first, and she ran the business.
All right, gentlemen. Thank you. With that being said, those in favor of the motion signify for saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, like so? Motion carries you now. As gentlemen, thank you.
Yeah, well done, guys.
John, great work.
Terrific.
Mr. Bull.
Wonderful.
Super. I'm really, really excited to see this move forward.
Thank you all very much. Thanks a lot.
Well done, guys.
Chairman, item nine on the agenda is the fiscal year two thousand twenty-two update from the Dare Soil and Water Conservation District.
I agree.
And Adam Simon's here to make that presentation.
Adam, welcome this morning.
Good morning.
Morning, commissioners. Tomorrow will mark a year in this position as a community conservationist. I have two of my five board supervisors here, Laura Eddy with the Nature Conservancy and Alana Harrison. A little bit about my background. I grew up in Hanover, Virginia. Attended Randolph-Macon College. I studied environmental studies and biology. Actually received a five thousand dollar scholarship from my local soil and water conservation district heading into college. Graduated and moved down here, spent four years working for the Division of Marine Fisheries, focusing on commercial fish house sampling and independent studies, juvenile fish trawls, multiple different things. So scope of work, what I've been doing in this position. So public assistance, I get phone calls ranging with really anything considering natural resources. I do outreach and education. With this being my first year, I didn't get to go to a lot of schools, which I'm going to change that this year. I've done presentations for the public, attended public events like Earth Day. We recently sponsored a student to attend the Resource Conservation Workshop, which is held by NC State University. She had a great time. I have more on that. I secure funds through various programs dealing with water quality issues and administer them. A few of the cost share programs is the Community Conservation Assistance Program, the Agricultural Cost Share Program, Agricultural Water Resources Assistance Program. So I do outreach for these programs. I hand out brochures, go to businesses that are related that sell any type of lawn material, trying to get more of a word out down south and unincorporated there. So I support and apply for the landowners, and then if they are awarded funding through the programs, I manage their contracts. Another type of program is stream debris removal. So I apply for funds for that, and then I manage those projects. Here's a photograph of the student that we sent to the Resource Conservation Workshop. They had about a week's worth of training. Each day consisted of something different, learning about agriculture and natural resources. This is a soil pit where they're identifying different layers of the soil. Here's where, a picture of the student learning how to So in January, we finished up the, would be my first stream debris removal project. It was US sixty-four canals. There was five segments from Hurricane Dorian that had substantial amount of trees down blocking water flow, six thousand five hundred and forty feet of linear, linear footage. The state had allocated thirty-two thousand seven hundred for the project. We had the bid processed and selected a contractor and spent twelve thousand seven hundred and fifty-three dollars.
You're going too fast. I can't follow that, Adam. These things are flying. Sorry.
So here's three of the smaller segments for the area of work for the stream debris removal. These are the two largest segments in Eastlake. And I have some pictures to show kind of the work that was done. So this is an aerial image of the trees down from Hurricane Dorian. This is one of the larger areas of work.
Is that a video?
No, I was just trying to go to the next slide.
I got a question while we're waiting for, do you have any future work slated for the Eastlake area? We had some folks that came in and talked to us about that a few meetings ago.
Yeah, I had applied for funding through the new stream rehabilitation program for vegetation removal, like dead alligator weeds. I didn't receive funding for that, but I'm gonna get to the new stream flow rehabilitation program shortly.
The ditches need to be cleaned out.
What y'all strategically chose to do, you know, made, made a lot of sense. I mean, it's very visible, so hopefully this will be something that we can figure out an avenue to keep doing.
Yeah, the new statewide program's nice because it's not related to a certain storm event, whereas in the past, the projects have been, you know, stuff that's happened due to storms, so.
Adam, while we're waiting, move on.
Yeah, please.
Move on, even if you don't have the slide.
Yeah. So I mentioned the new statewide program. It's the Stream Flow Rehabilitation Assistance Program. It's administered by the North Carolina Department of Agriculture and Consumer Services. In the first year, they had three hundred and twelve million dollars in requests for assistance, and they had thirty-six point one million dollars available for project allocation within the county. The county in total was allocated four hundred and forty-eight thousand one hundred and sixty-eight dollars, and this rated in between three projects. I applied for funding for Renoc Island's drainage infrastructure. The town of Kill Devil Hills applied, and the town of Kitty Hawk applied. As soon as I found about, about the program, I told all the municipalities, and originally I was going to do the applying for, but they ended up applying for themselves. I have images of the Renoc Island drainage system that I'll be working on. So another program that I somewhat deal with is the North Carolina Department of Environmental Quality Aquatic Weed Control Program. So last summer, the state sprayed one point four or five acres of alligator weed along US sixty-four canals. I'm waiting for an update on this summer spraying. I recently acquired my aquatic weed applicator's license. So the biggest cost share program that we have here in the county is the Community Conservation Assistance Program, which is a water quality program that allows homeowners or landowners to apply for cost share funding up to seventy-five percent. There's a list of about twelve to fifteen best management practices that all deal with stormwater issues causing erosion wherever there's a natural resource concern. The Dare District had the most applications in the whole state. We had thirty-six applications out of the total ninety-three for last fiscal year. We were one of the three districts to reach the hundred thousand dollar cap. This, this program received additional funding, non-recurring, for the first time since it was introduced in two thousand and three with one point five million dollars. Usually in the past, this program for the county, we would have twenty thousand dollars to work with. With the hundred thousand dollar cap reached last year, we were able to allocate funding to seven projects. Two marshals, one marshal with the bio retention and critical area planting, one critical area planting, as well as one shoreline stabilization, So the agricultural cost share program is a cost share program that is basically designed to protect water quality. There's very few farmers here in this county, but we do have a few that farm the Refuge land, Alligator River Refuge. We have allocated fifteen thousand dollars to a farmer for four hundred acres of cover crop, and he is proposing to plant wheat in November, and that will help with erosion. The next cost share program is called Agricultural Water Resource Program, and this is more of a water quantity program whereas quality. So we have a local farmer on Renoc Island that has a lack of water quantity. So they will be using six thousand seven hundred and eighty-three dollars worth of funding to supply a water well and a pump. And just a summary of acquired funds brought into the county in my first year. We have the Stream Flow Rehabilitation Assistance Program, four hundred forty-eight thousand one hundred sixty-eight dollars, Community Conservation Assistance Program, a hundred thousand dollars, Agricultural Cost Share Program, fifteen thousand dollars, and Agricultural Water Resource Assistance Program, six thousand seven hundred eighty-three, with a total of funds of five hundred sixty-nine thousand nine hundred fifty-one dollars. Do you all have any questions for me?
I, I do. Adam, thank you. Appreciate all the work you're doing. With specific regard to the alligator weed, I think you said spraying program, this is a yearly occurrence for us. It, it, it comes up every year. It comes up, alligator weed, you know, starving the ability for the canal to, to basically flow to the Alligator River. Is there some other means for removing alligator weed mechanically? Because spraying don't seem to be getting it done. I mean, it obviously has some bearing on it, but it's not a where I'll be all. Is there a, a, a way to mechanically remove it on top, in addition to spraying?
Yes, sir, there is. And that's, so with the new program, I applied for a bunch. I went and looked and checked all the matting that was, at the time, it wasn't, you know, foliage on it, but that's what they were going to do, is take heavy equipment and just pull out all the vegetation, you know, even though it was dormant. But yeah, there's, there's that avenue spraying, but I've noticed just from, you know, my one year going up and down US sixty-four, that there's a lot of, you know, obstruction of flow caused by that. I also get calls for Eurasian milfoil, which is another, when there's a lot of freshwater, you know, in certain communities, that can block boat ramps and other things. You know, as far as the state, it's a fifty, you know, fifty percent match with the county. I think it's a thousand dollars, and they spray one time a year. I just obtained my applicator's license, so in the future, if that's an avenue, avenue you all wanted me to look into and maybe take under my wing, I could potentially do that, since we would have then a year-round, you know, way to address the problem.
In your experience and training, what is the efficacy of removing it mechanically versus spraying it?
Yeah, so with mechanical, that's how originally, like any type of weed removal was done back in the fifties. That was the main method. It's a little bit more, it's not more cost effective, but it does have a lot better, I feel like, outcome because you're moving out the whole plant's root system and everything in the water system. Whereas spraying, you're not always killing the whole plant entirely, so you have the chance for, you know, new growth to begin if it's not sprayed correctly. I, I have no experience mechanically removing weeds out of water systems. It seems to be today, at least what I've came across, either granular or liquid, you know, weed applications is kind of what is, you know, the norm, but for, like I said, the, the vegetation program that I applied for funding was to do that mechanically remove, you know, all the mats.
So that, that request is in now?
That request didn't receive funding. There was three hundred and twelve million dollars worth of request, and there was only thirty-six million dollars to allocate, so that one was not selected. In the application that I, you know, I applied for the program, one of the questions was how many, you know, houses or landowners would be affected by this removal. And I think, I mean, I calculated it to the best of my ability, but I think that might have been one of the reasons why it didn't get selected.
Yeah, exactly. So is, is that a yearly application? Will you be applying for that again?
Yes, sir. So this is the first year. They, they want to get these projects on the ground, so I'm going to have a pre-bid meeting in October for this upcoming Renoc Island project, and then yes, it will be continuous each year.
So when, when do you find out if you get funding or not?
So I learned about it in January, and I applied, I believe, at the end of February, and then I was notified about a month and a half after that my application received funding. But in the future, I'm not sure what time of the year they'll have, you know, your application deadline, but.
Well, please come back to us when you, when you apply and, and get an answer from them, if you would. Let us know how that goes.
Yes, sir.
Appreciate it. Thank you.
Okay. Anyone else have any questions, Adam? Thank you, Adam, for what you do, the hard work you do. I would really, really appreciate it. Thank you for this update.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Chairman, item ten is a proclamation for World Alzheimer's Month. Gail Sinesso was, I don't.
Yeah, she's not here.
She's not here. I don't know who's supposed to speak for her.
I'm Catherine Fendler, and I'm on the Board of Jem, and I'm here to represent Gail and.
Thank you, Catherine. Do we have a proclamation?
We do, and I'll read it.
Okay.
Whereas September twenty-second will mark the eleventh World Alzheimer's Month, an international campaign to ra, to raise awareness of dementia and challenge stigma. This year's campaign promotes the important message that together we can ensure no one faces dementia alone, which highlights the need for all of us to reach out to people with dementia in our community to let them know they are supported. And whereas Jem Adult Day Services strives to raise awareness in our community about Alzheimer's and related dementias, along with the need for progressive programs of care for the individual, educational programs for our community, and care partner support, we can all raise awareness and promote Dare County as a dementia-inclusive community. And whereas dementia becomes a trillion-dollar disease in two thousand and eighteen, informal dementia caregiving is equivalent to forty million full-time workers. A disproportionate number of women are informal caregivers. Most people living with dementia do not receive a diagnosis or support. In North Carolina, over one hundred and eighty thousand. In North Carolina, over 180,000 people are living with Alzheimer's disease, a number projected to increase to more than 210,000 by 2025. Whereas while there is no cure for Alzheimer's and related dementias, there is treatment in the form of person-centered care that will promote a healthier lifestyle for people with the disease. And whereas Dare County joins individuals living with the effects of Alzheimer's and related dementias, their families, community friends, and caregivers in promoting care for those living with the disease by supporting educational programs and direct support services for our Dare County families. And whereas Dare County joins Alzheimer's Disease International honoring those living with Alzheimer's disease, those who have passed, and caregivers, both family and professional, at Jem's 15th Annual Candle Lighting on November 20th, 2022, and throughout the year. Now therefore, the Dare County Board of Commissioners hereby proclaims September 2022 as World Alzheimer's Disease Awareness Month in Dare County and commends its observance to all citizens. This the sixth day of September 2022.
Pleasure of the Board.
Move to move to approve proclamation.
There's a motion on the floor by the Vice Chairman to approve the proclamation.
Second.
World Heart World Alzheimer's Month as presented, and it's been seconded by Commissioner, was it Ross?
Ross.
Yeah. Any further discussion? Hearing none. Those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose like sign. Motion carries unanimous. Thank you, Catherine. Appreciate you being here.
Item 11 is an update on the Caregivers' Day Out program, and Seema Davies and Diane Denny are here for that presentation.
Good morning, ladies.
Good morning. Cheryl did a great job with this agenda organization, putting these two items back to back. Certainly, Jem and the Dementia Friendly Coalition do phenomenal work in our community, serving folks in need with dementia and Alzheimer's. And today, we're I'm here with Diane Denny. We were here back in March, I believe it was, or February, to talk about a new program that was being launched through a partnership between DHHS and the Dementia Friendly Coalition called Caregivers' Day Out. And Diane's going to tell you a little bit more about how that's been going, which has been going really, really well, and then show you just a brief slideshow to kind of see it in action as well. So I'll turn it over to Diane.
Thank you. And thank you. Thank you to Jem for putting the proclamation in. Thank you so much. Good morning. Thanks for your time today. Wanted to give you an update on our Caregivers' Day Out. We had our first Day Out program on March 21st of 2022. We had one participant and six volunteers. I'm happy to report that now we have seven registered participants and 11 volunteers. Consistently, there are now six participants that come every week. We've been lucky enough to have volunteers each week to have a one-on-one ratio with our participants. This has been a great experience to be able to get to know the participants and their abilities and be able to engage them at their best. Our mission states that we want the participants and their caregivers to still feel worthwhile and be a part of the community, to have a purpose in life. We've been able to accomplish that by the activities each Monday. You'll see in the slides, some of our activities have included decorating hats for Easter. And to bring the community into it, we donated those to Peak Resources. We painted Mother's Day cards that we donated to Spring Arbor. We decorated baseball hats with the help of bow ties donated by someone we all know and donated those to Peak Resources. We made dog pull toys and donated those to the SPCA. We've also had some community folks come in and tell us about the happenings in the community, like Murph from Nest and Dan from Elizabethan Gardens. Each activity helps to connect the participants to the community, promoting inclusion and purpose. I'll share one caregiver experience with you. Right before tax season, a wife dropped off her husband. And I said, so what are you going to do do this morning? She said, I'm going to go home and work on my taxes. And I was like, oh, no, don't do that. And she said, well, I need to do that. Okay. She comes back to pick him up, and I said, so how did the taxes go? She said, uh, I didn't do the taxes. I went to the beach and did Tai Chi. And you know what? That's exactly what she needed to do. That made me happy because that's exactly what the program is for the caregiver to go and get recharged. The caregivers have time to recharge, whatever that means for them. It gives the participants time to shine, knowing that they're making a difference in a safe and secure environment. Our focus now is to expand the program, whether that means to get more participants at another day or have an additional day at a different location. We're growing. Thank you and the whole community for their support. A special thanks to DHHS for their support, as well as to the the folks at the Parks and Rec and KDH. Their staff has been so supportive. We've actually done two programs with their day camps, which has been really interesting with our seniors and and eight and eight to 12-year-old kids. But it's been it's been really fun. Remember that this is a free a free program, and we're able to do that because of our dementia Alzheimer's walk that we have every year and our Love to Remember Tennis Tournament. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Diane. Sheila.
Thank you.
Great stuff, ladies. Great stuff.
And... I'm just going to put a plug one more time that this is a free program for families. And so if you know of anyone, I know the volunteers are incredibly committed and would love to see the program grow, and they have the capacity for more individuals to participate. So if you're looking to get it more information, you can go to the website for the Dementia Friendly Coalition and get more information.
Great, great, great stuff, Gail.
How many days a week is it available, Diane?
I'm sorry?
How many days a week? Once a week?
One day a week. From Monday morning until 9:30 to 1:00.
9:30 to 1:00 on Mondays, one day a week. Okay.
Thanks again, Diane, for what you do. I got a phone call from Diane not too long ago, said, Bob, you got any spare bow ties? Said, sure. I said, how many you need? Well, I need about a dozen, so...
I'll give you two.
They were they were well, well, well-used in that video. Thank you for doing that, Diane. It's great to see stuff like that take place for our seniors and those that have dementia.
Item 12 on the agenda. This is a proclamation for Constitution Week, and Colleen Fagerston's here for that.
Good morning, ladies and welcome.
We'd like to thank the county for agreeing to declare Dare County celebrating Constitution Week.
Who are you again, please?
The Daughters of the American Revolution.
Yes.
Advocated and President Eisenhower.
No, no, you you too. I got that.
We are. We are Colleen Fagerston and...
Sue Wazalowski.
Sue, say it in my...
I really lost.
Sue Wazalowski.
Well, welcome, ladies. Thank you.
We're representing the Dare the Daughters of the American Revolution here in Dare County. And the entire nation will celebrate Constitution Week the 17th of September through the 23rd of September since 1957, advocated originally by the Daughters of the American Revolution. And on the 17th, we would like you all to join us at the Veterans Memorial here in Manio, and we will have a little celebration, and we will ring the bells across America at 4 o'clock, which they will be rung all across the country as they did on the day they signed the Constitution.
Wow. Fantastic. I believe you all have a proclamation, correct?
Yes, sir.
This is a Constitution Week proclamation. Whereas the Constitution of the United States of America, the guardian of our liberties embodies the principles of limited government and republic dedicated to rule by law. And whereas September 17th, 2022 marks 230, the 235th anniversary of the drafting of the Constitution of the United States of America by the Constitutional Convention. And whereas it is fitting and proper to accord official recognition to this magnificent document and its memorable anniversary and to the patriotic celebrations which will commemorate the occasion. And where it is the privilege and duty of the American people to commemorate the 232nd anniversary of the drafting of the Constitution of the United States of America with appropriate ceremonies and activities. Whereas public law 915 guarantees the issuing of a proclamation each year by the President of the United States of America, designating September 17th through 23rd as Constitution Week. Now therefore, the Dare County Board of Commissioners thus hereby proclaim the week of Sept- September 17th through 23rd as Constitution Week and urges all citizens of Dare County to study the Constitution and reflect on the privilege of being an American with all the rights and responsibilities which that privilege involves. And witness where I've set my hand and calls the County Seal of Dare County to be affixed as the sixth day of September 2022.
All right. Pleasure of the Board.
So move, Mr. Chairman.
There's a motion on the floor by Commissioner Couch to approve the Constitution Week proclamation. It's been seconded by Commissioner Ross. Any further discussion?
Absolutely.
Obviously, I think it's a terrific proclamation. Just a small, I think maybe a correction in the fourth whereas, since this will be official, it's the 235th anniversary of drafting from 1787, and it says 232nd.
I don't know.
What? Wait a minute. The DAR doesn't know?
Just double-check that and make sure that's correct.
Well, you can see, Bob, in the second whereas, it's 235th, so I think it's just a tiny typo.
It must have been a typo.
That's okay. We'll just correct it. You bet.
We'll get it corrected. Thank you for pointing that out, Commissioner Ross. Pardon?
Thanks for all you do.
Yeah, absolutely, ladies. Thank you. All right. With that being said, those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose like sign. Motion carries unanimous.
And you all come on 17th at 4 o'clock?
Thank you.
Item 13 on the agenda is, item 13 on the agenda is a proclamation for Diaper Need Awareness Week, and Carla Heppert is here for that.
Good morning, Ms. Heppert. Been a long morning, hadn't it?
It has, but it's been good. So I want to thank you all for having me here this morning to talk briefly about Diaper Need Awareness Week and CYP's Diaper Bank. My name is Carla Heppert, and I'm the Education and Program Evaluation Manager for Children and Youth Partnership for Dare County. I am also CYP's Diaper Bank's coordinator, so it is truly a passion of the heart for me.
Ms. Heppert, before you continue, are you any chance related to former Assistant Chief Mr. Rick Heppert?
Yes, sir, I am. I'm his daughter.
I thought so.
Yes, sir.
Thank you for being here.
Thank you. As an organization that has a mission of helping families thrive, diapers and diaper need has always been on the radar of CYP. Diaper need is defined as the lack of an adequate supply of diapers to keep a baby or child clean, dry, and healthy. And one in three American families report that they've struggled to afford diapers for their child. With diapers costing between $70 to $80 or more monthly, that's just for one child, and no safety net programs such as WIC or SNAP benefits being able to support the purchase of diapers, you can see that families could find themselves in a pinch. When the pandemic hit in early 2020, families lost income, and we at CYP knew that it was time to act in support of families with children in diapers. So with a COVID grant from the Outer Banks Community Foundation and the generosity of our local community businesses, organizations, and individuals, we launched CYP's Diaper Bank in May of 2020 and began distributing free diapers to families in need in our community. Thanks to continued community support, throughout the pandemic, we've been able to provide monthly contactless diaper pickup events. We hold these on the second Tuesday and Wednesday of every month at our office here in Manio. We've also been holding diaper drive-through events occasionally. We've partnered with the Fezzton Center down in Buxton. We've partnered with Kitty Hawk Baptist Church up in Kitty Hawk as a way to spread across our long geography. We know that the Outer Banks is a long place to be, so we want to hit it everywhere. To date, we have distributed over 5,000 packs of diapers to families in Dare County. That's 160,000 diapers that we have distributed in our community. And as we like to call them, that's a change for the better in our community. At the end of this month, the week of September 24th through October 2nd is what is going to be recognized nationally as Diaper Need Awareness Week. As the title states, this week is a time to bring awareness to diaper need and the struggles of families who can't provide diapers for their children. It's also a great time to spread awareness about CYP's Diaper Bank in our community and our continued support of families with children in diapers, as well as our continued need for community support. So I thank you all this morning. I appreciate your time, and I hope that you will proclaim September 24th through October 2nd as Diaper Need Awareness Week. I welcome any questions or comments you may have.
Thank you, Ms. Heppert. We appreciate it. I believe we have a proclamation that the county manager is going to read.
Whereas diaper need, the condition of not having a sufficient supply of clean diapers to keep babies and toddlers clean, dry, and healthy, can adversely affect the health and well-being of babies, toddlers, and their families. Whereas national surveys and research studies report that one in three families struggles with diaper need, and 48% of the families delay changing a diaper to extend their supply. And whereas purchasing enough diapers to keep a baby or toddler clean, dry, and healthy can consume 14% of a low-wage family's post-tax income, making it difficult to obtain a sufficient supply. And whereas a daily or weekly supply of diapers is generally an eligibility requirement for babies and toddlers to participate in childcare programs and quality early education programs. And whereas without enough diapers, babies and toddlers risk infections and health problems that may require medical attention and may prevent parents from attending worker school, thereby hurting the family's economic prospects and well-being. And whereas the Dare County community recognizes that diaper need is a public health issue, and addressing diaper need can lead to an economic opportunity for our families and community and improve health for our children, thus ensuring all children and families have access to the basic necessities required to thrive and reach their full potential. And whereas Dare County is proud to be home to trusted, community-based organizations, including the Children and Youth Partnership for Dare County, that recognize the importance of diapers in ensuring health and providing economic stability for families, and thus distribute diapers to families through various channels. Now therefore, Dare County Board of Commissioners do hereby proclaim the week of September 24th through October 2nd, 2022, as Diaper Need Awareness Week in Dare County. We thank the Children and Youth Partnership, their staff, and donors for their service through CYP's Diaper Bank, and encourage the citizens of our community to support CYP's Diaper Bank to help ensure that all Dare County children and families have what they need to thrive. This the sixth day of September 2022.
Pleasure of the Board. Motion to adopt. There's a motion to adopt by Commissioner Tovin. It's been seconded by our Vice Chairman, Mr. Ove. Any further discussion and any questions of Mrs. Heppert?
Ms. Heppert, I do have one question, and this shows my ignorance on the subject. It's been a long time since I had a baby and diaper. Are cloth diapers still in use, or are they past tense for good reason?
Yes, sir. Cloth diapers. Some people do cloth diaper, but some of the challenge with cloth diapering is being sure that you have available washing machines and dryers because that's definitely something you have to have. Instead of taking your clothes to a dermatologist, it's not really feasible. Also, the same for childcare, being able to provide disposable diapers is much more recommended than cloth diapers because cloth diapers require immediate cleaning and action.
Okay, so primarily what you're providing are the are the...
Are disposable diapers. Yes, sir. We have looked into the possibility of doing some courses on cloth diapering, as well as potty training as kind of an extension of CYP's Diaper Bank.
One of the reasons I was asking you about that is is I was, I nearly fell on my chair when you said it was $80 a month per one child, you know, per child to to for supplying diapers. So that was the nexus of the question. Appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you again, Ms. Heppert. Those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose like sign. Motion carries unanimous.
Chairman, item 14. Seema Davies is here to present a proclamation for Suicide Prevention Awareness.
Welcome again, Sheila.
Good morning again. Thank you. September is Suicide Prevention Awareness Month, a time to raise awareness of the stigmatized and often taboo topic. This month provides an opportunity to shift public perception, spread hope, and share vital information to the people affected by suicide. In the most recent Dare County Community Health Needs Assessment, suicide was noted as the eighth leading cause of death in Dare County and the second leading cause of death among individuals 20 to 39 ages.
What's the first?
I'm sorry?
This is the second.
This is the second. What was the first?
The first is overall cancers.
Cancers in that young group?
No, oh, no, I don't know in the young group. I'll get that for the, it definitely was not cancer in the young group.
Nope, I'm going with overdose.
Probably overdose, yeah.
Just so we get it.
Okay. The Breaking Through Task Force, Saving Lives Task Force, Be Resilient OBX, and Dare County Department of Health and Human Services have teamed up to host a town hall event in September. The event will feature the recent film documentary, Shattering the Silence, a documentary about suicide in Dare County. The goal of this event is to provide individuals with a basic understanding of the impacts of suicide, while ensuring that individuals, friends, and families have access to the resources they need to learn about, discuss suicide prevention, and seek help. This event will be held on Tuesday, September twenty-seventh, at five-thirty, from five-thirty to eight-thirty at the First Flight High School. Light refreshments will also be provided. The documentary will air at six fifteen with a question-and-answer panel following. Panel participants include Benny Baldwin, a documentary videographer, Kristy McEwen, Outer Banks Counseling Services, Susan Lee, a counselor, Keith Hamm with Mobile Crisis, Stephanie Webb with Trillium, Dr. Ashley Clower with Surf Medicine and Dare County Health and Human Services Board. This event is open to anyone, but parental discretion is encouraged just given the nature of the topic. And with that, I would like to read a proclamation for Suicide Prevention Awareness Month. Whereas September is known around the United States as National Suicide Prevention Awareness Month and is intended to help promote awareness, and whereas suicide prevention is important to address year-round, and Suicide Prevention Awareness Month provides a dedicated time to come together with collective passion and strength to address a difficult topic. And whereas we can all benefit from honest conversations about mental health conditions and suicide, just because one conversation can change a life. And whereas suicidal thoughts can affect anyone regardless of age, gender, race, orientation, income level, religion, or background. And whereas according to the CDC, the U.S. twenty-twenty suicide death rate was fourteen per one hundred thousand, with more than forty-five thousand dying yearly by suicide. It was noted as the twelfth leading cause of death among adults in the United States. And whereas Dare County's suicide rate is nineteen point three and is the eighth leading cause of death among adults in Dare County. And whereas local organizations such as the Breaking Through Task Force, Saving Lives Task Force, Be Resilient OBX, and Dare County Department of Health and Human Services are on the front lines of this battle that many still refuse to discuss in public, since suicide and mental illness remain an uncomfortable topic to talk about. And whereas every member of our community should understand that through life struggles, we all need the occasional reminder that there are many silently fighting their own battles. And whereas we encourage all residents to take the time to inquire as to the well-being of their family, friends, and neighbors, and to genuinely convey their appreciation for their existence by any gesture they deem appropriate. And whereas we can all help prevent suicide. Now therefore, the Dare County Board of Commissioners does hereby proclaim the month of September two thousand twenty-two as Suicide Prevention Awareness Month, and calls upon the citizens of Dare County to increase their awareness and understanding of the problems we face regarding mental health concerns and suicide.
Move to approve.
Okay, there's a motion on the floor by the Vice Chairman to approve a proclamation Suicide Prevention Awareness Month, and it's been seconded by Commissioner Bateman. Any of the, any further discussion? Hearing none, those in favor of the motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose like sign. Motion carries unanimous. Thank you, Sheila.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, item fifteen is the Capitol Improvement Planning Committee recommendations for various facilities. Do you have that up on the thing, Matt? If not, they have the material.
No, I don't have it.
Okay. So in your packet of materials, you have a map that we sent you, and the map goes down, and it starts, and it basically shows the location of all of the facilities that we're looking at in the first stages of our, and they start with EMS Station Four in Southern Shores and EMS Station in Kitty Hawk, EMS Station One in Kill Devil Hills. There's some improvements at the Baum Center and the Kill Devil Hills Youth Center, including the proposed pickleball courts. There's the Nags Head Soccer Complex, some improvements there, some work at EMS Station Five, which is in Nags Head, the EMS Station Three on Run Oak Island, and Station Eight over on Mans Harbor. There's the Lions Club facility improvements there, and there's Public Works, work to replace our Public Works Department is on there, as well as as you go further south, an EMS Station in Rodanthe, as well as improvements to the EMS Station in Hatteras or in Buxton. And then there's some improvements at the Pheasant Center in Buxton, as well as some improvements to the, and changes at the transfer station. I'm going to go through that at some length. I'll skip to, we had some slides in there that you all have that basically are the renderings of the facilities. You all have seen those renderings. They're nice looking. The CIP went through those in some detail. We looked at all of those. I won't waste a lot of time going through those now unless you all have questions about those. We had a proposed site plan for the, for the Public Works facilities, and that's to rebuild that whole facility. That'll have, everything in it will be new when we're done. It is a phased approach. We'll build the garage area first, and then we'll build the recycling area and so on. As we move from one to the other, we'll move out of where we were, so it allows us to continue to operate the recycling facilities at the same time that we're building and constructing the new facilities. Similarly, the station, the transfer station that we have down in Buxton needs to be reworked and reorganized. The flows don't work there. The way things have it now aren't correct. We've got to put some bleach aid capture systems in down there, some things we don't currently have to bring that up to speed. And so there's a placeholder in there for about a million dollars, and we'll come to that in a minute for, for that as well. So really, just to go through the finances of all that, and we'll come to some individual stuff. With our EMS projects, we have that set in three phases. The three phases, the total cost for all of those projects is about fifty-nine million dollars. There's a schedule in your, in your packet that, of those, and they're, as they're phased, but we intend to complete all of those projects at the end of two thousand twenty-four or the beginning of two thousand twenty-five. Okay, so we'll run through, let's see if I can get them on my screen. We'll run through those real quick. You can see that's EMS Station One, the rendering of that. Okay, so you can see the rendering of that. As we go through these stations, they're all very similar. They have the same look. When you see one of those buildings, you'll know it's a Dare County facility. This is the new hangar for the helicopter. We had some discussion about the need for the second hangar and the prospect of getting another helicopter, but the, really, the main function of that second hangar is, one, there's, on the left-hand side, there's some storage facility and some other things that we need, and then there's some other types of storage and things that you need there on the right-hand side of those hangar bays. And then you need about half of that hangar bay to lay out the, when you're repairing, you've got to break that whole helicopter down on certain intervals, and you have to have a layout area to lay all that out in. And so the question was, could we reduce that size? And really, it didn't become cost-effective to knock out, you know, a quarter of a hangar. You may as well have, leave it in there. If you ever did get another helicopter, or when we bought a new helicopter, maybe we keep the old helicopter, and then you have a place to put that. So there was some discussion about that, but the net conclusion was to leave that as is. Again, another of the EMS station, no, this is the Manio Youth Center that's going to go where the Masonic Lodge is. That is moving forward. The town of Manio has seen that. They've given some recommendations and some architectural things they'd like us to do, and the engineer, their architecture working on that. And they're going to do a zoning change. I'm not sure the zoning change was necessary, but they're doing it anyway just to make it clear, and so that is all in the process as well. That is the layout I was telling you for the new Public Works facility. As you can see, just about everything in it is new, and, again, as one building is built, we'll move out of the old building into the new building, tear that building down, and build whatever the next stage is. It is designed so that all of the public function is up in the front and to the bottom of the screen on the front of that site. Everything past that will be behind the gate to keep the public out of the working areas, but allow them access where they need access, and so it's a much better design than we have now. We're, to get to where the public needs to be, they have to drive through the whole I was telling you about Buxton. This is the layout of what the Buxton facility will look like. There's some storage needs out by the bypass. There's, will be included in that that'll help the rec department solve with some storage needs they have down there, so that'll be included in that as well. Is that it? Matt? Yeah, the numbers part of this is so small, you wouldn't be able to read it anyway on that screen, but, so I went through the numbers. I told you that on the EMS projects, they are all phased to where they would be completed at or around the end of two thousand twenty-four, the beginning of two thousand twenty-five. The detail of that schedule is in your packet as well. When we look at the Public Works projects, the total cost of that that we projected earlier was about twenty-nine million. That was our October two thousand twenty-one estimate. We added an escalation for moving that forward of about three and a half million, just because to try to cover additional expenses that have occurred since then. We put in a million for what needed to be done in Buxton. We don't have a number on that yet, but that's a placeholder for the Buxton project, making the total cost of all the construction for both projects about thirty-three seven, thirty-three million, seven hundred thousand. There's a six hundred and fifty thousand cost of issuance to issue the bonds and things needed to finance that, so that the total debt amount to do those two projects would be thirty-four million, four hundred and six thousand, eight hundred and ninety-five The next cost we have, we're talking about the recreation improvements. Our recreation project, we had enlisted the architects to come in, and we were given the task of how do we update our facilities to make them look modern? We have facilities that were built mostly in the eighties. We wanted, you all wanted us to get those spruced up, new facades, new paint, that sort of thing. In that process, it morphed into some growth, and so some of the other needs to be addressed beyond just sprucing them up were attempted to be addressed in this as well. There was a, one of the things on the list was a soccer turf fields at Nags Head for about five and a half million dollars. We had chose at a previous meeting to not do those. We looked at that. We've got a little over eight hundred thousand dollars in a current budget to add three regular turf fields at, behind First Flight Middle and First Flight Elementary School. It's really two full-size fields and one field that's for the younger kids. It's not quite a full-size soccer field. Soccer fields are bigger than football fields, for those of you that don't play soccer. So it's a little bit harder to put them on the fields, but nonetheless, that's there. Those, that lighting process has begun. We met with the school officials last week to get that going and have got our, everything on go. They're going to meet, I think, the seventeenth or sixteenth, the board meets, the Board of Education meets to approve us going forward with that on their property. And as a result of that, we eliminated, the CIP eliminated that five and a half million dollars. There's some renovations and improvements at the Kill Devil Hills Youth Center. There's a number of things there. There's some additions, there's some storage, there's some things to do for the exercise program, I mean, the gymnastics programs and that. Down, further down, there's some improvements at the Lion Club. That was about a ten and a half million dollars improvements. However, the CIP chose to deduct about six point six million, and there was an addition to that that they didn't think was necessary. So at the Lions Club, they reduced that improvement cost by six point six million. There's four hundred and fifty-three thousand, six hundred dollars for pickleball courts. That number is a number that included some improvements for bathrooms and those kinds of things. The number of courts will be determined by however far that will go. I think it said on your report, two. Obviously, you could get more than two for that amount of money. When we were talking after the meeting, we looked at, you know, if you put them at the Baum Center, for example, there are restroom facilities and that there, so the half of that four hundred and fifty-three thousand that was going to be for those types of facilities would be unnecessary and could be put back into pickleball courts. Again, depending on where the location is, where they're built ultimately, would determine how far your money would go and what you'd need for other amenities there, but that's there. Down at the Pheasant Center, there was two point nine million in repairs, and then another two million in upgrades and costs, and most of that dealt with storage and things that aren't there now. And similarly, at the Baum Center, there was some significant repairs to do there, and then there was some storage and some additions there to add some facilities to that as well for the Baum Center. And then finally, you know, if we're going to do any other athletic fields, then that's a cost to be determined that's not in this. So with all that said, we had initially about thirty-six million dollars of overall recreational costs. The CIP, with the cuts I described above, reduced that, and it's recommending about twenty-three million, eight hundred and seventy thousand dollars in recreation facility improvements. That, to make it fit in the CIP the way the current plan is, that puts that out to about two thousand twenty-eight. You've heard some talk of moving it earlier. To move that amount of money earlier would require you to move something else later, so you would have to rearrange the priorities in your plan. The priorities in the plan are basically the EMS Center, you know, the Youth Center, the Public Works Facilities. Those are the priorities ahead of the rec stuff, the day-to-day needs to bring those up to capacity there. And so when you escalate that out, you have an escalation factor of a little over three and a half million, and that means that the total cost for that, we believe, would be around twenty-eight-three.
We don't know that that three and a half million is going to happen.
We do not.
We are conservatively building in an additional
Correct.
Three and a half million of inflation on this.
Right. Correct, and we're trying, what we've done with, by doing that across all of these things is
My head's exploding.
To not have a gotcha moment when we get ready to do it, say.
No, I remember we did it. I was there, but it just, I continue to see it and reflect on.
Absolutely.
Dear God.
Yeah. And so that, that takes us through. You all have seen the overall report. I think I sent you that a while back, so you're aware of the overall concepts there. When you plug that all in, there's another sheet that tells you, we look at how that fits in our projects. We have to have, we have a policy of coverage ratios, and there's a sheet in there that has a box on the right that has your model coverage. What that tells you is the CIP plan as it's proposed works with the funding that we have available, and it keeps your coverage ratio, I think the lowest is one point oh five, like in two thousand forty-one. So that's so far out, it doesn't mean anything.
Can't plan next week. Yeah, I'm with you, Bobby.
But, you know, in the, in the near future, the lowest, you know, is in two thousand and twenty-nine, which would be about one point two-three. So our coverage ratios are all good throughout, and these funds that we've projected, even with the escalators, work in the model. Let's see, just to give you a rundown, our EMS projects are for the two thousand twenty-three, two thousand twenty-four year. Public Works are the two thousand twenty-four through two thousand twenty-five. Parks and Recs are the two thousand twenty-eight. We have on here that we have Dare Med Fight replacement. That means that theoretically, that's when we replace the helicopter, two thousand thirty-three. And so that's in here and is shown. Whether that becomes necessary or not, we'll have to wait until we get closer to two thousand thirty-three, but it's planned for. I'm trying to think what else that's on here that you all need to know. The CIP committee has recommended moving The CIP committee has recommended moving forward with all of those projects. We also have some work going on at the animal shelter finally. I know Commissioner Ross was frustrated with the delay there, but that's finally on the move. We're looking at the youth center, beach nourishment's now complete. We're going to talk about affordable housing in just a minute. We have, we're replacing a bulkhead that's being done as we speak, or the process is in process as we speak down in Rodanthe, around the emergency ferry dock there, that bulkhead is collapsing. And so we're putting that back to make that safe. There's a drainage process. We have some funds in the budget for the drainage fund up in the north end of Roanoke Island. That's been bid and that process is underway too, or in the process. We've got what we call Island H modifications. That's a part of our dredge program to put, to create, or create capacity at a dredge island so that spoil can be put there. That's something that you've already approved, but that's capitalized, that's going forward. We talked about the Buxton transfer station. And then the Avon, the Buxton water line that you keep hearing about every three or four months, somewhere we have a break, that's being replaced. That's gone out to bid and that work should start here soon so that hopefully we won't continue to have those breaks down there. And so those are all of the capital plans that we have going forward and it's before you to authorize us to move forward as proposed and as recommended by the committee.
What about the Mans Harbor Fire Department?
The Mans Harbor Fire Department in the Mans Harbor EMS station is
That's part of it.
Included an extension to make that long enough to include. Just so you know, just to be aware, the Mans Harbor Fire Station or EMS renovation proposes building it behind the fire station. It takes out the old EMS station and then elongates the fire station so that it's long enough to house all their equipment. That's in, that is in the, in the plan.
All right, thank you, Danny. Go ahead.
A little concern about the Fessenden Center, being that area is exposed there. The roof is in bad shape. We've got basic repairs coming up. Is there any kind of stopgap that buildings and grounds might be able to do to?
Well, they'll do whatever we need to do. I mean, we won't eliminate our maintenance budgets between now and repair and replacement and construction. So to the extent that we have to do things intermittently and we may have to spend some significant money somewhere between now and 2025 to keep something operational. That's just something that we would do ongoing in the budget.
Okay.
All right, we have the recommendation by the CIP committee before you. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Motion was made by Commissioner Tobin, it's been seconded by Commissioner Bateman. Any further discussion? Hearing none, those in favor of the motion, then signify by saying aye. Pose like sign, motion carries unanimous.
Mr. Chairman, that brings us to item 16, and that's our affordable housing. At long last, I emailed you all copies of the proposed contracts, I think on Friday. And at long last, we have come, I hope, to the end of the negotiation process for both the Wota Cooper contract as well as the coastal affordable housing contracts. I've been doing this a long time. These were the most complicated, frustrating, difficult contracts that I've been involved with. But nonetheless, we're there. You all have given me authority in multiple meetings to just sign these contracts. I didn't do that. I wasn't uncomfortable doing that. These things have morphed and changed and spun around and trying to meet compliance requirements and changing statutes and all that other stuff that I felt like it was important to bring them before you, to make sure you understood them, understood what we were getting into and get your approval before I or anyone signed them. So the first one I'm going to look at is, let's look at, let's look at the Wota Cooper one first. I'm going to run through what I've highlighted on here. Wota Cooper is proposing to do two projects of 100 units, 50 units each, one in Manayoe, one in Nag's Head. We've talked about those. It says if either of these locations become unavailable or unsuitable for any reason, then Wota will identify alternate sites and will go look at those. They're going to do 100 units. They're going to be Lytec units. Their preliminary proposal is for 24 one bedroom, 66 two bedroom and 10 three bedrooms. But the final mix will be determined in consultation with us and with their market analysis as well. Notwithstanding, the final unit mix has got to be approved by us. So we have the veto power ultimately over the mix. They're going to do all, their Lytec, they're all below 80% and they'll meet the 20% of 60% AMI requirement. So that won't be issued. They'll build this with Wota Cooper, but they're going to be using a number of their Wota Cooper affiliates. They have some nonprofits, they have a construction company, they have various entities within their entity that do this kind of work for them. And they'll be involved in development. They agree that it remains affordable for the entire term. They're going to be using a ground lease so that we'll own the property and lease it back to them and it will always be affordable. They'll commence, they've gone, without the agreement, they've gone ahead and done a lot of the legwork to get their financing in place. And they'll start development as quickly as possible, but they expect it to be for sure within the next 12 months. They've agreed to pay the DFI fee, the 1% fee with respect to the Bowser Town project. They've asked us to give good faith consideration to impact fee or other waivers as they come up, if they're needed and if we can. They've asked us, we're using, we're putting, have committed $9 million to these projects. We're using up to $1 million of the 9 million towards their pre-development costs, if you will. And they'll give us a draw schedule as we get into those. And they're doing those in equal. So for every dollar we put in pre-development, they'll put in a dollar pre-development. So they'll have skin in the game since we have our money in the game as well. You know, we could pull out of this. If they don't get their financing within 12 months, then we can pull out of this and terminate the agreement. The million dollars that we put in, or whatever portion of that we put in, if for whatever reason it's terminated, we lose that. There's no payback provisions there. So that's our risk, is that million going up front. And so if something happens, we pull out, can't do it, whatever the reason is, you know, whatever we've spent of that pre-development is gone. We've agreed to purchase the Nag's Head property when they get their financing in place. The idea is before the banks are going to lend, they're going to have to have all their permits, they're going to have to have all the town requirements and all that. And so when that is done, then we'll take some of our $9 million and buy the Nag's Head property in our name and then we'll own it and lease it back to them. As we go forward, they're going to build and draw from our money and their money. And you're going to ask me what pair of pursue means and pair of pursue means on equal basis, one to one. So as we, or not one to one, relatively speaking, as we go through, if we're paying 40% of the project, then 40% of each draw will be our money, another 60% will be theirs. Under the statutes, under the law, and to make this thing work, they have to lease, we have to lease it back to them and we have to get rent. We can't just give them a free lease. We've worked through our attorneys at Parker Poe and through their attorneys. And basically what we're doing is taking the fair market value of the property, saying, okay, if you took that and you restricted it with a lifetime incumbence of affordable housing project and you couldn't buy or sell it, except if you wanted to operate an affordable housing project on the site under the terms of our lease and our MOU that we're doing, you know, what does that do? And that would significantly reduce the price. And we know that because when we put out an RFQ for bidders for affordable housing, we got two out of the whole world of bidders. We've got two. We got Wota and we got coastal affordable. And so the market value of a restricted project like that is low. They've taken that and amortized that over the term of the ground lease and they'll pay that annually. It'll be the last thing paid so that they pay all their operating costs first. If for some reason they didn't have enough money to pay the rent in a year, then they would carry it over to the next year. But if it ever gets to 28,000 in unpaid rent, then they've got to bring the balance clean at that point or else they're in breach so that we ultimately get our money. There'll be a ground lease and in the ground lease, we'll have the covenants that say all those things that we've been talking about. We don't spend any of our million prior to closing or execution of the final approved lease. We've got to have everything in place before we start spending money. And that's really it with respect to the Wota Cooper contract. There's a ground lease that's attached to that. The ground lease is pretty straightforward. It's 65 years. It has the rent arrangement I just talked about. They pay all the expenses associated with the property during the term of the lease. It has, you know, the restrictions of what they can do with it. If they default, it comes back to us. So we have the remedy. We either can file suit for specific performance to make them comply or we have the right to take the project back away from them and do something out with that. They can't assign anything without our consent. So we're going to be dealing with Wota unless we choose not to. If they choose to sell it or assign it and we don't like who they're selling or assigning to, then we don't have to consent to it. They're in default if they don't pay the rents, if they don't comply with the terms of the lease or the MOU, if they abandon any of it, if they fail to comply with the affordability covenants that are required, then they're in default. The affordability covenant talks about 80% of AMI. We have that in there. Let's see what else. Again, they're agreeing to pay 100% of all expenses associated with this. At the turn, at the end of the lease or at termination, they surrender the premises to us. They indemnify us from all losses, claims, liabilities, et cetera, for their failure to deliver the premises to us, should they be required to do that. If they, if they're required, if they use a mortgage and all that, they are not, they are not going to be allowed to, we're not going to be required to subordinate our lease agreement to their loan so that any lender would be bound by this as well. And so should they default with a lender, this provides that the lender can foreclose and sell, but whoever buys has to operate in compliance with our ground lease. It doesn't cut off the ground lease. So we keep control both during the lending phase, at the initial phase, and then at the surrender phase. We have our remedies spelled out in this already. If it gets damaged in a storm, blows down, whatever, they have the obligation to repair or replace. That's all them. There's no new money coming from us once this thing is complete. We have no liabilities or obligations there. And that's it. That's the memorandum of agreement and the lease.
Does the ground lease agreement get executed for both properties they're going to build on?
It, well.
Separate ones or one?
It provides we can do it either way and it will depend on how the lending, once it's done. Whichever way works best for the financing is the way that it'll get done.
Okay. Because it says 100 unit fam, multifamily thing. If they did two, execute two.
Well, this is for, we won't, we won't sign this ground lease today. We'll sign this ground lease later when we get those and fill it in. But it is to make sure we don't have misunderstanding about what the ground lease should be down the road. So if you want to take these one at a time.
Let's take them individually.
Yeah. If you have any questions on that, if you do not.
Another question to Bobby. Go ahead.
Bobby, just to quote, I know they're going to be managing the property when it's done and we're, they're going to be doing it under our okay on the percentages of where, what goes where. With regard to workforce housing or essential housing as a part of this, will, for example, school teachers or police or fire people get any, there will be no preference at all in that?
This is going to, in fact, they might not be eligible for these. These are going to be straight Lytec.
I didn't think so.
It's going to all be Lytec.
These will be 100. Now, the one we're getting ready to do will not be Lytec. So that'll hit that market. But these are, the Lytec was probably the lower, maybe a beginning teacher might could. I'm not sure where they start.
We're seeing around 36,000.
Yeah, they're going to be close.
Other than that, no.
So, but even, even if they did, there would be no preference?
There'd be no preferences.
Okay.
Correct.
All right, any other questions to Bobby?
Yes.
Yes, sir. Go ahead.
Wota Cooper will be developing this according to the pro formas they supplied us. And in those cost development pro formas, we discussed, you and I, Bobby, about possible increases or other aspects of the cost that they would shoulder and bear, not pass on to the county.
So the concern was, was we've been working on this for how long? Seems like forever, but what, less than a year, but a while with Wota Cooper. And obviously the prices have gone up and things change with regard to the pro formas that we saw earlier and we were satisfied with those pro formas. When I talked to them on Friday about that issue, they said that yes, in fact, the pro formas had, will, will change and they'll change a number of times as they get their financing in place and find out what all their final costs will be. However, what they did say was, one is they stay committed to 100 units. Two, they stay, our contribution will be $9 million. And so any of the cost escalation increases and all that, they're going to absorb those. And so they're prepared to take those risks and they know that that's coming. And so from our perspective, when we sign this, you know, nothing changes. If the cost goes up by three or four percent from what they projected, then that's three or four percent out of their bottom line that they have to absorb or they have to make up some other way in, in what they do. We talked about, you know, the finishes or how they design the buildings or whatever. But nonetheless, that, those are costs that they have to eat, not us.
And my second question was simply to confirm through that pro forma and the detailed line items from construction to land acquisition to soft costs. One of those I wanted to make note of was the architect fees of $420,000 for the 100 units, which on average is about $4,200 per unit.
Right.
I just confirmed that with you. That was part of.
That was in the pro forma. Now, again, in the conversation that I had with them, we didn't talk about that specifically. But we, both us and both me and Wota Cooper acknowledged that some of the things on that pro forma may wind up costing more than what's shown there. Whether the architect fees could go up now or not, I don't know. But what the discussion was, was how did that impact us? And if it went up, they're just taking it out of their own money. So.
Yep. Okay. Thank you.
Anyone else? All right, we need to move on this. What's the pleasure of the board?
Move to approve.
There's a motion on the floor about a vice chairman to approve. It's been seconded by Commissioner Couch. Any further discussion? Hearing none, those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose like sign. Motion carries unanimous.
All right. And then this brings us to the coastal affordable housing one. And this is the one that, I brought my files, I was going to show them to you, but I don't think I will. But they're about this thick. I don't know, I don't even remember what iteration of this we're in now. It's got to be at least 10. 24, this is the 24th iteration of this contract. The statute has changed at least twice during this process. The first time it helped us in some ways, it hurt us. The second time, it fixed some of the ways it hurt us, but it hurt us in a different way. And so back and forth, but we think we've finally come to an agreement. This is a pre-development agreement. This is only an agreement to deal with the things that we need to deal with between now and when the time of construction begins. It's anticipated that the next phase will be the construction phase and at that time we'll do an agreement. That agreement will take care of a lot of the issues that this doesn't. For example, who's going to own it? Is it going to be a ground lease? What are the unit mixes? All those things like that, developer fees, those things that we've talked about, but we haven't agreed on are all going to be a part of the development agreement. The covenants that'll go in either a ground lease or stand on their own, depending on how we decide to do that, all those things are things that are left to do during the construction phase. It's anticipated. It's anticipated that if we approve this today, that they'll move forward with the pre-development work and start that in earnest. And during that time, we'll start working on the development agreement, which is the next phase, so that we're not wasting time when they finish pre-development. We hope to have that in place so that we can keep right on going seamlessly into the construction process. To go through this in a little bit of detail, we have an agreement with Coastal Affordable Housing. Coastal Affordable Housing is an LLC. It's an LLC that is made up of other LLCs. You understand, that's the way people do things. It's done for liability purposes. It says in here that the developer, through its principles, which we've met the principles, has experience in developing multifamily, has experience in public-private partnerships, and they do. And then we talk about what we're going to do. And in this pre-development, we're going to go through and we're going to, the goal is to provide affordable housing between the market rate and a reduced rate. And that's language that's in the statute. The statute says that. And if they do that, then we give them, we're lending them the $35 million that the state gave us. And then they, we have to calculate annually the difference in what market rate rent is versus the rent we're charging in these units. And whatever the difference is, is that savings. And that savings accumulates over time. And during that time, if they save $35 million, then the state will then allow us to forgive that loan. And so they don't have to pay it back. If they do not, the amount that they do not save, if you will, they're required to repay to us and then us to the state. This says, notwithstanding any other provisions, we're not liable to coastal affordable housing for anything above the $35 million that we get from the state. Everything's contingent on us getting that money. There's no money out of the general fund or anywhere else going into this project. It's all coming out of the funding that the state provided to us. And it's all being provided under the rules that are under the statute that gave the money, the appropriation statute. This is the pre-development agreement. Much as we did with WOota Cooper, we've got $5 million in pre-development costs set aside for that. There's a schedule, one of the schedules on the back has a list of those $5 million costs. That's an up to amount. It doesn't mean we're going to spend all $5 million of that, but that's, we will authorize up to $5 million of those pre-development costs. Again, much as with the WOota Cooper one, if we get to the construction phase and for whatever reason we don't go forward, we can't come to a deal on the site, we can't come to a deal on the units, we can't come to a deal on the mix, whatever the reason is, we can't make a deal going forward, then we are out that $5 million. There's no obligation for anyone to repay. So our risk in this project is $5 million of those funds. If we were to do that, then whatever the work product is that they create out of those funds, we get that work product so that we could go to another developer. That work product becomes ours and we could use that with them to try to develop a project that we could agree with and for whatever reason we couldn't agree with them. And so hopefully, we could do another project where we wouldn't have to repay the state that $5 million. But if we did not, then we would have to repay it because we didn't get any units for the $5 million, which is what the state requires. This project anticipates 300 to 400 multifamily units. They have already looked at sites throughout the county and identifying sites now. Depending on what site becomes the best site, if you will, there may be some action require this board. I'm going to call it a friendly condemnation where we work out an agreement with a developer where we condemn, and he knows he's getting a certain thing, so he doesn't contest the condemnation, if you will. The idea being that we can then clean up defects in the property with title or with liens or whatever might be out there. We could fix those things if we had to through a condemnation project. Don't know if that'll happen or if that's necessary, but that's something that we have discussed. I talked to you about the work product. There's a management plan attached that gives you a schedule of how things are going to occur, timing wise. Right now, the biggest obstacle, if you will, with regard to timing is getting land, get it under contract, getting it zoned properly so that we can start doing the other things. And it's not for lack of effort. It's just been a long and arduous process. It has a provision in here that says that if they're eligible for consideration for some ad valorem tax purposes under the, for low-income housing development under GS 105277, we'll help them with that. We're not promising them they can or can't get it. We're just saying that if it's available to them and they're eligible, then it's okay with us if they get it. In this one, to keep the cost down and the interest cost down with rising rates, then our $35 million is the first $35 million in. So rather than them going ahead and borrowing all their money upfront and paying draws with our draws, we'll use up our $35 million to pay the first $35 million in construction and then they'll use what they borrow to pay the last $60 million or thereabouts in construction as well. That saves them some significant interest, which means there's some dollars that can go into the project that get us units. There's, section 4.6 talks about ownership and you'll notice it doesn't mention ownership. It mentions it'll be operated by them. It doesn't say ownership on purpose. We took it out on purpose because we haven't resolved how we're going to do that yet. We haven't among ourselves nor have they, whether it's going to be a ground lease or whether they're actually going to own it and we're going to restrict it. And that's something that we'll work out in the development agreement that's coming.
Which section was that, Bobby?
4.6.
Right. Right. Sorry. Yeah.
Down in 6.1, I talked to you about purchase of the work project. It says what I just said. If we don't complete it, then we get the work product that has been completed with the money that we've spent. You got a question?
Yes, sir. How far down the road are we? You said we'll define some of these things as we go along. How far down the road are we financially, at which time we're trying to decide whether we get a ground lease or they on it, we on it?
I don't know. It depends on how fast we can. The issues that are out there with the development are known to us and to them. We have pushed them down the road in the sake of time because we're trying to get moving to get these sites ready. And if we were going to wait while we hassle through all that, we would be another 60 or 90 days before we could start doing those other things. And so we've put those in the construction agreement. We can work on those, I mean, we can start tomorrow. There are, there's three or four contentious issues, I'm thinking, that we're going to have to sit in a room and knock out and see where they lead us and come to some agreement or not. And if we get past those, then the other development stuff is easy. There's no really, I said contention, it's not contention, but points of view, the way they're looking at it, the way we're looking at it, we've just got to reconcile those to some common ground on several issues that are in this that'll come up. And I can't tell you how far it will be because I don't know how long that'll take. And we'll start spending money soon as we've signed this agreement. There's things they can do that will start costing money. The agreement says we don't pay for any of the expenses that they've incurred up to now. So it's only new money that we're obligated for, other than the market analysis is in that schedule. And so they've done a market analysis already and that would be a part of that $5 million. But other than that, there's no expense that we're obligated for today.
Do you recall how much that market analysis was? It's included in the $5 million, Bobby? Off the top of your head?
I don't remember.
Yeah, I don't either. You guys remember? Yeah, okay.
But it's in that number. So nonetheless, that's, there'll be some amount of money and if it went to the last day, then it'd be $5 million. But I wouldn't anticipate going that long. I can't tell you where in between. And that's why we've got the work product provision there. Because if we get to a point where we can't come to an agreement and we've spent, let's just say we spent $3 million, with the $3 million worth of drawings, site plans, whatever they've done to justify a payment of that money, we get it and we take it and we go hire firm ABC, take that work product and say, take this and now tell us what you could do. Here's what we want. We couldn't get them to agree to it. Will you agree to it? And we'll use that work product to go forward.
Got you.
Bobby, real quickly, I know this will be calculated, as you've described in here, as I read, on the forgivable loan premise, calculated by a market rate that we will agree to jointly versus a statute-governed lower rate driven around AMI and guidelines?
Correct.
I'm not trying to drill you on this. I'm going for a more general point. Some amount, for sake of my question, markets 1,500 and our reduced rate, we agreed, per statute, et cetera, is $1,000 per month per unit. That theoretically, that $500 per month per unit would be the calculation against which the loan is being forgiven. Is that right?
Right.
So if there were 400 units, 500 a month is $6,000 a year. 6,000 times 400, I guess, is 2.4 million, just in my rough calculation. So in essence, we would be looking at a timeframe horizon with a theoretical 2.4 million repayment per year to satisfy the loan. Is that about the way this is?
Correct.
Okay. I just make sure I'm understanding it correct.
Kind of like how the dredge is set up.
Yeah.
Just to give you a broader context of that, because I think it's important. The statute specifically provides what you just said. We couldn't do different than that if we want to because the statute requires that. The statute also says they get to ultimately determine the rate. We've got in the agreement that we'll be in that process and we have to agree on a lot of things and so we're in it. But the statute says they get to pick it because they're at risk for $35 million. And so they've got an incentive to either build enough units to get a whole lot of small margins or build enough units to get a whole lot of large margins or something to capitalize, to recapture that $25 million. And I think it's over 25 years in order to not have to repay that debt.
For some reason, I'm still struggling with the statute requirements on a certain number of units at.
Correct.
No more than 80% AMI and so forth.
So that's one of the issues that's in here and I don't think I got to it yet. They have to comply with all the state, the applicable state statutes and constitutions. And so there's two kind of limitations on rates. One is a statutory rate. I think we're okay there because in the statute, the legislature specifically did this statute, specifically said they can pick the rate, specifically said, here's how you do it. And so I think that trumps any statute that was its predecessor. So the 80% statute, if you will, doesn't apply. There was a statute that said that. So we're on this one because of the way we got the money.
Have we seen that yet? I have not seen this new statute guideline on setting the rate. I've been operating under the 80% AMI that we've talked about for a year.
Well, that's because we're in the third iteration of the statute and this third iteration of the statute says these things. The first iteration of the statute, we were still in the 80% AMI. The third iteration, they took the 80% AMI out.
So we're going to pick the reduced rate from?
From the market rate.
But we're going to just pick it?
Right. Now, there's an issue that me and the other attorney don't agree on.
I apologize. This is new news to me. I did not know this.
There's a, in my opinion, there's a constitutional provision that requires you to use local funds and our funds are local, there are local funds once we get them that require us to do those for low-income people. And low income has been defined in case law as 20%, 60% at 20% AMI. And so the question is, do we have to meet that criteria? I believe that we do. I'm telling you, I don't think they believe that we do.
20% at 60% AMI?
Right.
20% of the units at 60% AMI?
Correct.
So for our consumption, that's 20% of the units for people in the 35,000 to 36,000, 38,000 rate.
Correct.
And then you just said we have disagreement with that?
Well, they think that the constitutional provision doesn't say what I think it says. And so we'll figure that out. We'll get an opinion and make sure. And then just to cover that, they're required to meet statutory constitutional requirements and then they're required to indemnify us for that. And when we get to the indemnities, not only are we getting coastal affordable housing and getting the LLCs that compose that, but we're getting each of the people's individual personal indemnities as well to indemnize us for those things. And so that's one of those things that we've got to work through in the marketing mix that comes in the development agreement. Which helps, I mean, there's some benefit to this because by not having to worry about that 80% AMI, it allows us to open the market up to what we're trying to hit.
It does. And again, and maybe you guys all know this. This is the first time I've come to, maybe you know this. I did not know it. How did you know it?
I read it.
So you got it as of Friday? No, you got the stat. Okay. And I failed to read the statute and I stand guilty of such.
And unless I gave it to you, you wouldn't have read it. And I haven't, we haven't talked about this, because we haven't talked about this contract much.
So you gave it to Commissioner Tobin?
I didn't give it, no. He got it. I don't know. There's a legislative news service. If you're on it, you could get it and read them.
Maybe that's what I should do then.
Yeah. Anyway, that's what that statute says and that was the third iteration that came out with the budget amendments that came back in the fall.
Bobby, do a question. And let's say there's an opinion that comes down from somewhere that says this is okay and we move forward on that basis. And then someone challenges it in court and the court agrees with you. So what is the remedy?
The remedy is for the dollars that were local dollars, we would be responsible to replace those dollars and then we would be going after them individually to get those dollars back. Because that's what the indemnities are for.
Okay, got it.
Otherwise, we would, I mean, if we were relying just on the, and we would have, I mean, they have an asset. They have a $100 million, 400 unit thing that we could go after as well. So. Talking about the work product. I'm just looking to see. We talked about the indemnities. Each one of them, Robert Ferris, Jordan Hennessy, Aaron Thomas and Marion Warren, all individual.
Where are you at? Where are you at?
I'm on paragraph 7.14.
7. what?
7.14. So, so those are the indemnities. And then if you go over to the next page where it says county and the last sentence before 7.15, that when we get ready to do the development agreement, we're going to renegotiate indemnities as well. And again, from our perspective, we want to be sure that whatever comes of those discussions that we're covered and we get those indemnities for us to cover. Our basis should somebody interpret the rules differently than we did at that time. I've made it clear to them and I think they agree, we're the bank. We got the money and we're giving them the money as the bank and that we don't have any liability for anything operationally, construction-wise, whatever. operationally, construction wise, whatever, and if somebody ever comes back on any of this stuff, that it's our position that they're on the hook for it because they're the ones that are doing the project, making the money and handling all of these things. And so whatever we negotiate in our development agreement going forward will include similar language that, that indemnifies us to make sure we aren't putting our necks out for anything.
Would that be something like, say for instance, a mechanic's lien?
Well, yeah, yeah, right, whatever. And, and to the extent that, you know, if we wound up owning the property in a ground lease, then we'll go into that in more detail than if they own it, right? And, and again, whatever they do, before they pass title to any property into anybody's name, whether it's our name or their name, we either have a ground lease ready to go simultaneously or we'll have covenants ready to go simultaneously so that anything that happens post-closing would be subject to our lease or subject to our covenants. And that's really, that's it, that's the high points of, of this agreement. And absent questions, then this is ready for you all to move forward with as well.
All right, anyone have any questions about?
With respect to this pre-development?
As of obligation, I feel like Neil Armstrong going into space.
I know.
We're first.
I know.
Guys, we've been, this essential housing is not going to go away, the, the problem is gonna continue to be there for future boards, for future people, we got a serious problem and this is the blueprint for trying to deal with this, we knew it's not gonna be easy, there's a lot of questions, but you know, we need, we gotta move forward. A generic statement, but I, I don't know what, what else to say.
Anyone else?
Yeah, I'd like to have a primer outside of the meeting explaining the latest statute since I'm not up to speed with all of you.
How about, let me just do that real quickly.
That's news to me today, I didn't.
Okay, sorry.
I didn't know either.
It's, it's a page long, I can tell you right now unless you want more detail than that, I mean, the statute's pretty straightforward.
Okay.
It's, it's section 24.1B of session law 2022 dash.
It's in the budget.
Yeah, it's in the budget, looking for the number.
It's in the budget bill.
Okay. This is the one we got from Perry from McGuire Woods, that's what I'm looking at. It says that the sum of $35 million in non-recurring funds shall be directed to Dare County. That was to avoid that federal thing that we spent months trying to work our way around.
Right, right. That I recall vividly.
That's right, so that took it out of the general fund, not out of the federal funds and solved that problem for us. It says, for the purpose of making a forgivable loan to a qualified private partner selected by the county to construct affordable housing units in accordance with the county's longstanding master plan to increase workforce housing, which was included in the Affordable Housing Best Practice Prepared by RTI International in 2016 and presented to the Dare County Board of Commissioners. That's the economic study we had done in 16 that had the provision that affordable housing was a necessary thing if we were going to have economic growth and development and all that in Dare County. Dare County and the selected private part, qualified private partner shall enter into a written agreement to implement the provisions of this section. It will not be subject to Article III or Article VIII of Chapter 143, those are the bid requirements. Unlike the first statute, this doesn't have a selection process, it doesn't say we have to have an RFQ, it doesn't say how we have to choose our partner, it doesn't have anything like that in it at all and so it basically says, you go get somebody to do it, here's $35 million, you lend it to them and they're gonna build you housing and, and there are no other really rules in here for, for us. Now, from the other perspective, it says the agreement shall authorize, we gotta enter an agreement, which is phase one of the agreement we just did. The agreement will authorize the use of the funds, the agreement shall be for a term of 25 years and so when we get to the construction agreement, we'll have an agreement that has all that in it because they've got to make their savings over that 25-year term. It said, at the expiration, you can either terminate the agreement or you can, or you can extend it but with the mutual consent of both parties. So either to terminate or go forward requires everybody to agree. As the repayment of the forgivable loan, the, the partner shall provide affordable housing at a cost savings between the usual and market rate for housing of the type developed, which will, should be determined jointly by Dare County and the qualified partner, and a lower rate which will be set by the qualified partner. So we and them have to agree on what, quote, the market rate is.
But that's where our participation ends.
Pursuant to the statute, although in the agreement, we have some language that allows us to be involved in that rate mix as well. The agreement shall account for cost savings that total the amount of forgivable loan over the term of the agreement. Dare County on, on an annual basis shall forgive that portion of the loan based on the provision of reduced housing costs by the private partner.
And, and where's that language in this that, that's the paragraph I'm focused on, Bobby? Setting the market rate jointly and then?
I think what we've got in there.
Solely setting the reduced rate by coastal.
It's, it is in there, but it's in there in two ways, I think it's in paragraph H?
Eight?
H, on the first page.
H.
And it's, there's also a provision in there that says, everything we do will be in compliance with the statute, so that's sort of a catch-all.
Section 2.5.
Section 2.5, legislative funding, legislative funding.
But we've just superseded all the other statutes you said.
Right, right.
So this is the statute?
This is the statute, yes.
So that's it?
So what we did.
We jointly set one and they set the other by themselves.
Well, but they have to, they have to set it so they can pay back that $35 million over 25 years.
But there's another provision in here, I just gotta find it, that says that we have a say in that. It's the provision that says in the construction thing.
It's in that H, Bobby. Which rate shall be determined jointly by the county and the developer and a lower rate which is called reduced rate, which shall be set by the developer.
Well, that's the market rate there, but there's another provision here, if I can find it, just give me a second.
That's the reduced rate.
Okay, 2.3 says, the development agreement means the agreement negotiated by the parties to set forth the rights and obligations of the county and developer in phase two and phase three of the project, which shall include among other matters, provisions addressing the developer's fees, perpetual restrictive covenants, ground leases, rental rates, unit mix and any other matters related to the project and not contained in this agreement. So that's where we get our input.
Development agreement?
In the development agreement, correct.
Okay.
Well, this is that in H as well?
Yeah, well.
I mean, there's the heart of it right there, I mean, that's, that's the nuts and, uh, nuts and bolts of this thing.
And those four or five things that I said, that I listed in there and then, and then all other matters, but really those four or five things are the things that we haven't agreed to, that we do need to agree to and we've got to come to some consensus on, the sooner the better, but doing what we're doing today will allow them to move forward in earnest so that we can stop spinning wheels.
This is on another subject, are we, are we still confined by that 2024 deadline?
By the, no.
We're not.
They took that out as well.
They took that out?
Yep.
Cause?
I, I just read you this whole statute.
Okay, all right, all right, well.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the pre-development agreement.
All right, as a motion on floor by Commissioner Tobin, is there a second?
A second.
Second by Commissioner Bateman, the floor is open for further discussion.
I just want to confirm that of the 5 million pre-development funding that we will be approving today, 60, almost 65% of it is the architectural fee. That's a yes, that's not a question, yeah, that's.
If that's what's on that schedule, then yes.
Yes. And my, my curiosity is that it's in section 2.8, 300 to 400 units are targeted under contemplation of the agreement, yes? I'm looking at 2.8.
Well, it says 3 to 4.
3 to 400. So, so if we do 300 units, that's approximately $10,500 per unit and if we do 400 units, that's approximately $8,000 per unit and we just approved a contract at $4,200 per unit. So I'm simply curious as to the, between 90% and 250% higher per unit architectural fee that we will be approving by signing this document and I don't.
The only answer I can give you is, is it's an up to number and yes, if they, as we discussed, if they bill us for whatever that number is, then, and give us an invoice and it's, then we'll pay it and that would result in what you just said. On the other hand, if they only spent a million of that in pre-development, then it would be significantly less than that.
So on exhibit C, and it enumerates by month, that's not a fixed rate that we will be paying every month 393,750?
Much as you said when we talked earlier, that likely we will get invoices for that amount of money, I would expect that.
So we will be billed, likely, 393,000, which again, could be between 90% and 250% higher.
Yes.
Am I the only one that has a question there, guys? I feel like I'm on an island here.
No, no, I'm, I'm getting ready to ask something. Would that be, we've also had the discussion about Lytec versus whatever you want to call this, the cost per door? Wouldn't it, wouldn't it be cheaper, Lytec wise, cost per door?
Well, that was, I think that was developer fee in a separate agreement, yeah.
That shouldn't, I think that, I don't know what the difference is, a difference could be, I'm just surmising. If, in the previous contract, if it was true, architect, just design and draw the buildings and the schematics and all that, that's it and that's what it costs, then fine, that's what it is. And, and you're right, if in the larger number there including site work and engineering fees and, and other sort of non-traditional architectural stuff under the caption of architects, then you're, you're getting a number that's different than that and I'm not saying that's what it is, I don't know the answer to that question, I could probably find out, but.
Will it depend on how many sites they have to go to and I mean?
Well, yeah, how many?
No, not an architecture fee, it wouldn't.
Well, it would, the, the iteration of the thing is gonna be determined by the site, you just can't put every, the, the shapes and layouts and all the stuff they do is gonna be different, height, you know, if you gotta be one height, you gotta do one thing, I, again, I'm not trying to justify their fee, I'm just saying.
Wouldn't that be something that we could negotiate under the, the, the construction agreement?
We, we could negotiate any architect's fees beyond this amount in, in the next agreement, but we couldn't negotiate, if we approve this, then we've approved.
We're locking in to 3.2 million dollars.
If we, if we approve this, we've approved this amount for now.
So we're locking in the?
We're, we're locking in that as the, as the cap to date and then if there's fees beyond that, then that's negotiable because we're not there yet.
Bobby, back to the conversation we had earlier when Woda Cooper, we were talking about the same thing, Rob asked the question and you came back with the answer, I believe it said that you, you asked them about that and they said that more likely it would probably be going up, it wasn't necessarily the figure that would be paid?
In Woda, we were specifically talking about construction costs.
Right.
You know, because we all know they've gone up and we've been working on this since back in the fall, so we know that in Woda, the, on their pro forma, their construction costs have gone up from what they anticipate.
But you made a comment about the architect when you.
Well, I, I was saying, whether they did or they didn't, I didn't ask that specifically, they, they could have, but I didn't, but even if they do, they're not gonna impact us in the Woda deal because we're gonna get 100 units for.
Right.
They're gonna, and it wouldn't make sense that they would because they're borrowing the rest of the money and they're just taking money out of their pocket and putting it in their other pocket.
Would, would that?
Go ahead, go ahead.
Is that, is that something we can take a second look at prior to approving this pre-development agreement with the developer?
All right, so if we, if we do not approve this today, then, then we don't approve it and we're, if we wait till the next meeting, we're a month away from getting it approved or we call a special meeting at some point to come in and approve it, so those are our choices. Another choice, if this is an issue, is that you don't approve it, you give me some parameters, if, if you want to use, we're gonna, if they'll agree to do this for some other number, million dollars for, for architect's fees in the pre-development stage to give us room to negotiate in the development stage, then we can go back to them with that number and you can say if they come back with that number, then you have the authority to sign it and I don't have to have another meeting to have you approve it. So if you, if I've got marking orders, if you will, on a number, then, then that's possible as well. Or, but if you approve it, you're locked into that number for now.
That, that fee that we're talking about today, is that relative to 3 to 400 units per, per one specific site? Or, or knowing what we know that's been turned down already, we know that there's gonna have to be multiple sites now and I dare say that we can get, I dare say we can get any more than 100 units on mul, on a multiple site, at least from what I'm hearing, I don't know.
That's section 2.12 and there's a if in there.
The answer is, I don't, I don't know the, I don't know the answer to what that number is based on. It is the number that has been in that exhibit from, I mean, we, we had a, a similar discussion with them previously about that number and they tried to explain it, I'm not sure they explained it to our satisfaction, but they tried to explain that. Again, I think that if, if it was, if it's a, if it was an up to number like that 5 million is, then fine, but it's, it looks like when it's divided up by month that they're looking, that they're expecting us to pay that per month, I don't know if it's up to that amount each month, but that wouldn't make sense either, so I don't know, that, if that's a number that is, and it, and it's not, this says architect's fees and consultants, so it's not just the architects, this, this would probably include, there's some engineers, there's a whole list in exhibit, exhibit A of a number of consulting companies they're gonna use and so I'm sure that it would, if it's, and they're consultants, then it includes fees to be paid to those folks as well, but I don't know what the breakdown is.
Well, it's a $100 million project too, 3% is not a lot for architectural fees on a $100 million project.
That's, that's something else I'm looking at as well, I'm putting those numbers in the back of my head as well.
But, but I, I'm, again, it says slash and consultants, so it includes the consultant fees, not just the architectural fees.
Okay, I believe the vice chairman had a question.
I was, I was gonna say, we got folks here, maybe they can answer, say twice, twice as high as the other crap.
Would you address that, Judge? Is that, would you?
You, anytime, anything.
So first of all, I'd like to thank you for your consideration, your time, this process actually has been stretching out since August, this is the third. This process actually has been stretching out since August. This is the third iteration of not only the statute and the 24th draft of this. Mr. Alton may only have sixteen or so copies of those. But I know that we've had all of these conversations. And I would like, before I say anything else, to say, yes, this is in consideration of a hundred million dollar project, of which sixty-five percent of it would be taken on by Coastal Affordable Housing, the principals, and therefore individually as well. In this particular instance, as far as how it's drafted, how the, meaning drafted, I'm not talking about how the contract's written. But taking a look at that particular paragraph on the exhibits, first of all, it is an up to number. It is, it says architect. I will not claim credit for that being incorrectly or incorrectly drafted because I am not that, I didn't create these exhibits because I'm not the constructor, I'm not the builder. But what that term includes is just about everything in the kitchen sink that when we were first coming to you and we first met and we were asking about what you wanted from us, this is what that figure includes. When we talk about consultants, it talks about our one person that absolutely knows everything about operating this type of development. You've met that person, you know who it is, and that company. It also includes not only architectural drawings, but engineers. And when you talk about engineers in Dare County, you're not just talking about somebody that, you know, roads and traffic signs and things such as that. You're talking about folks that can deal with groundwater and drainage. You're talking about civil engineers that have a panoply of experience and we're not talking about just one set. So we're talking about engineering, we're talking about consultant, we're talking about bringing all the folks that have helped bring the project together. And it will be invoiced. It'll come to you and the county, much like, as I understand, the dredge project is invoiced. But finally, when we talk about architectural fees specifically, I would like to decouple this conversation from Woda Cooper. Because a lot of our conversations that I've had with your incredible county attorney and county manager, we have to actually disengage from what you're doing with a Lytec project and what you're doing here. Here, you're wanting to provide housing for what we would call the working middle class. Not sixty, twenty, not eighty, twenty, not forty, whatever, not any of that. And I would point to the law as it has been redrafted in its third iteration that actually illustrates what your challenge is and what your desires are. And in this one figure, it encompasses any type of architectural drafting we're going to have to make that is unique to Dare County, that makes the maximum number of units possible on any land that we find. I'm sure you, as not only individuals, but as a body, you're aware of some of the difficulties we've already faced. And hopefully, we can find one track. But if we find one track, it's going to be a track that's not going to have a plan, a plan that comes out of a set of drawers and I've got, I'm building a hundred units, fifty-fifty, and I can just build them this way and everything's okay. This is in consultation with you. We are your private partner. You have acted in incredible good faith. Your county manager has done an incredible job. This is, like he said, one of the most complex contracts that he's ever had to deal with. You ultimately have oversight when you get the invoice. If it's not something that's credible and feasible in a hundred million dollar project, you have folks here that deal with that. This is the development phase of this project, excuse me, this is the predevelopment phase of this project. We've taken the last almost seven months to get to this point. There's been three iterations of the laws, I've said earlier. And the reason for that is because the federal guidelines never contemplated on doing what you wish to do. Ask your county manager. It got to the point where the folks that were responsible for administering these funds basically threw up their hands. So at this point, this would include not only architectural renderings, drawings, planning, specifications, sites, things such as that, engineering and all that it entails here in Dare County, and all of the consultants that will be required to not only construct, end up owning and operating this to the specifications that you wish. So that's what, as I understand, I think Mr. Alton will confirm that these four sheets at the very end are not, have never been of my construction. And quite frankly, I just have, I have a broad overview. And since in the room, I think I've got the most knowledge of this at this time, so why I would defer to you in your questions. Anything else, sir?
No, sir. Thank you, Judge. I appreciate you addressing it. Go ahead, Commissioner Tobin.
I just Googled what the costs, average costs are, percentage cost for architects. For house construction, five to twenty percent. For commercial structures, three to twelve percent. On another side, it says architects charge eight to fifteen percent of the total construction cost. I think the 3.1 million or whatever it is for a hundred million dollar project right now is totally in line.
And the 420,000 would be an incredible bargain at Woda Cooper.
I guess so.
Judge, you, we met in county manager's office one day and we reviewed, Jordan, you were there, the printed pro forma that you then retrieved, all of the copies thereof. Will you be planning to share that printed pro forma with us? Or is that still unavailable?
I don't have a copy anymore.
No, I don't want it right now. I'm just asking.
And the other question, if you recall, when we were doing pro formas, I basically just stepped away. If you want to talk about the contract, I can do that. As far as providing a pro forma, I think the appropriate time to discuss pro formas is when we get to the development agreement.
Yeah.
Those are the types of things that-
Okay. All right. That's fine. When we get to the development agreement, we will. And we will do so in a very granular fashion because much of what you said was true, I believe, not being an expert. But I don't see how the other project with Woda Cooper would not have engineering, soil analysis, related structural and/or soil engineering, as well as architectural designs, plans to get the most units. Most of that sounds like the same work, unless I'm misunderstanding. Am I misunderstanding, do you think, Bobby? I could be.
They both have it. What I don't know without their, without Woda's, what was included. If we're taking, if we're looking at an architect fee versus an architect fee, I don't know what's included in both of those. And are they the same? So we might not, whether they're apples and apples or not, I don't know the answer to that.
Right. Right. Well, that's why we'll get to the development phase then and-
And quite frankly, Mr. Commissioner, in all my years, you never asked the court a question. But in this instance, when you start, there's a difference between even apples. I spent this weekend in the mountains of North Carolina. And I got a case of Granny Smith's and I got a case of Galas. I'm not eating the Granny Smith's. I like a Gala. And so when you start pulling out performance and you start comparing performance and looking to apples to apples, I think the granularity that you're seeking will not be found just in a set of performance created by one set of folks versus a set of performance created by another set of folks. And quite frankly, I'd probably like to see those pro formas, to see what it's included. Because it's kind of hard to have the kind of transparency I've had with Mr. Alton if I don't, you know, know what kind of apple that you're trying to make your pie out of. And that's what I, that's what we had at the county commissioners' meeting. You had a, you had a pro forma, you were working off of it, and you were comparing it to this project. And I believe it's a huge difference between this project-
Well, that's why I asked if you will share your pro forma with us and you didn't really answer.
I don't, I don't have one.
Jordan, you care to answer?
You don't, do you have one with you?
No, I don't need it right now, Judge. I keep trying to say that. I'm asking, are you planning to share that?
That was a hypothetical pro forma.
Well, hold on one second. I really want to get back to this.
Okay.
The, you know, you're asking for a pro forma.
I'm asking, will you share a pro forma?
Of course, with the, at the development phase, but-
Look, what we're looking, what he's looking for is a benchmark. And so we, we don't do this, so he's looking for a benchmark. And we have one that we've seen, that we've been through. And if, if that is the benchmark, then we will use that as the benchmark against yours. If that's not an appropriate benchmark, then we need to feder that out and get an appropriate benchmark so that we know if it's three or seven percent or whatever, then if that's the benchmark that we use, then that's the benchmark that we use. And so I think that what Commissioner Ross is looking for is how do we reconcile the benchmarks so that we know that the numbers and we're spending our money appropriately?
That's all, that's all I'm asking for, Bobby, just so we know we're spending appropriately.
And I absolutely agree with that. But what I'd like to see is, you know, what's, what are the benchmarks across the board? And I'd like to see when we start talking about these things. But-
All right, if we, if we're going to do that at the development stage, then I think that's the question to answer. Do we have any other concerns?
I apologize.
Anything else, Commissioner Ross?
No, sir.
All right, then we, well, I'll entertain a motion.
I already made a motion.
Oh, sorry. I'm sorry. And it's been seconded by Commissioner Bateman, I believe, wasn't it?
Correct.
Chairman, can you add into that authorize me to sign? Because I got to put them in final form. I'll have to run it down.
The maker of the motion agreed to that?
Yes.
Second?
I agree.
Okay. All right, then. Any further discussion? All right. Hearing none, those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
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 Oppose? Motion carries unanimous.
And Mr. Chairman, on the Woda contract, I didn't get you to add authorizing me to sign it. Would you all please authorize me to sign that as well?
Do we need a separate motion to do that since we already passed the other motion?
Yes, because it wasn't in that motion.
Right.
Move it with Karen, Mr. Manicure sign.
All right. It's been made by the vice chair and seconded by Commissioner Couch. Any further discussion?
The clerk said she got it in the first motion. Maybe misunderstood. Okay.
Those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose like sign? Motion carries unanimous.
All right. Next, you have a road request, item seventeen. It's a request to add Concord Arbor Way, Concord Court and Arbor Way, Manio, to the state road system. And so that, that's, there's a resolution there to do that in front of you. And it simply needs your approval if you're prepared to do that.
You're looking at item seventeen, correct?
Item seventeen, yes, sir. It's just to add them to the state system.
That's not a complicated thing. I'm ready to roll.
You ready? Did you move?
I so moved. I so moved. We add Concord into the, recommend to add Concord into the state plan, state overview, purview.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Bateman. Any further discussion? Hearing none, those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose like sign? Motion carries unanimous.
All right. Item eighteen is the Outer Banks National Scenic Byway for the Frisco-Buxton Pathway Committee Board of Commissioners request for matching funds. And Mary Helen and others are here for that.
I'm Mary Helen Goodlow Murphy, and I chair the Outer Banks National Scenic Byway Committee. And this is Laura Erdl, who is a member of the Frisco-Buxton Pathway Committee and is also Director of Marketing and Public Relations for the Cape Hatteras National Seashore.
Cat electric water.
Oh, I'm sorry. Cape Hatteras electric.
Wow, you're really moving up, Laura. You're a smart girl.
No, y'all looked at me. No, she's not. Anyway. All right. On behalf of the Outer Banks National Scenic Byway and the Buxton Pathway Committees, the North Carolina and Dare County, the North Carolina Department of Transportation applied for a 2022 National Scenic Byway Program Grant. That award should happen sometime this fall, we expect. The national grant is like the one that built the Rhodanthi Waves Salvo Avon Pathways. It requires a 20% match. Laura will take you through the existing, the current program that we're talking about.
Okay, so for this grant that we applied for, it would build out 4.41 miles of the pathway. That would begin at the Cape Hatteras Secondary School in Buxton, and it's going to run south, ending at Piney Ridge Road, right by Little Grove United Methodist Church in Frisco. The estimated total for this section of the project is $2,482, sorry, $2,482,800. We need a 20% match. So in May, at your request, the Dare County Tourism Board granted this project a long-term unappropriated grant at $200,000 in order for the national grant application to be submitted. In your agenda packet, you'll see today a tourism impact grant application to be submitted by the Board of Commissioners to the Dare County Tourism Board, asking for another $200,000 in matching funds if we are awarded this national grant. This tourism impact grant applications are due in September. The tourism board's matching funds, if awarded, will still fall short of the required match. And we are committed to raising additional funds. We already have $23,000 on hand. We have another fall festival fundraising event planned on October 22nd at the Frisco Woods Campground. And we will continue to look for fundraising options.
So the committees are asking you all, the Board of Commissioners, to forward the tourism impact grant application, asking for another $200,000 in matching funds for this project, and authorize the county manager to sign the grant application and the chairman to sign the transmittal letter addressed to the Dare County Tourism Board.
Okay. Any questions?
Still moved.
Okay, there's a motion on the floor by Commissioner Couch. Is there a second?
I second it.
Seconded by Commissioner Tobin and Bateman. Any further discussion? Hearing none, those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose like sign? Motion carries unanimous.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Item nineteen concerns the date for the October board meeting. I think I've talked to most of you, but I have a conflict on that Monday, the third. I'd ask you to move it to Wednesday, the fifth, because I thought I had a conflict on Tuesday, the fourth as well. That has resolved itself. And so what I'm asking for now is to move the month either to Tuesday, the fourth, or Wednesday, the fifth, whichever works best for you all.
Well, I prefer Wednesday, the fifth, because I had already committed.
Same. I got a schedule.
Okay.
Even though that's changed.
My plan changed yesterday, so that's, I would have told you sooner.
So I would, you know, I'm available the fifth, but- Okay. Do you need a motion?
Yeah, you need a motion to change that meeting.
Then I'll make a motion to October the fifth, Wednesday.
October fifth, okay.
At what time?
Five. Five p.m. afternoon.
Well, no, we don't have, do we have to? We don't still have to.
We can do it, five p.m.'s fine if you want to. You can do whatever time.
Well, we normally do nine, but the reason we moved it to-
Yeah. Five, if five or five works, that's fine.
Pardon?
Whatever time you all want.
I prefer nine. What's it going to be?
Nine a.m.
Nine?
Whatever.
Okay. There's a motion on the floor, five, Wednesday, the fifth, at nine a.m. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by the vice chair. Any further discussion? Hearing none, those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose like sign? Motion carries unanimous.
Item twenty is a consent agenda. It's long, it's approval of the minutes, it's a Southern Alamo Moral Association meeting invitation list, update to the county financial policies, the North Carolina Highway Safety Program, local government resolution for the liaison, another one for the equipment, the Community Development Housing Fund budget amendment, Housing Fund Budget Amendment for State Appropriation, the Sheriff's Department Budget Amendment, a resolution for Oxy Tax Overpayments, the Government Education Access Channels Operating Committee Attendance Policy, Tax Collectors Report, the Dare County Tourism Board Memorandum of Understanding for an Easement with regard to the Soundside Boardwalk Improvements, the Island H Modification Project, Health and Human Services Breaking Through Task Force Public Awareness Campaign Grant, another DHHS School Health Team Workforce Funding, another DHHS, NENCPPH Public Health Workforce Grant, another Health and Human Services Communical Disease Pandemic Recovery Funding, and finally, the Hatteras Island Water Main Replacement Change Order Number One.
Okay, is there a motion to approve the consent agenda is presented?
So moved.
Motion by Vice Chairman Oatman, seconded by-
I'll second it.
Commissioner Tobin and Bateman. Any further discussion? Hearing none, those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose like sign? Motion carries unanimous.
Item twenty-one are your board appointments. The first is a children and youth partnership for Dare County. This says the chairman's going to handle this one?
It is.
He advised the Commissioner Couch to serve two terms, and he needs to appoint another commissioner to serve, so.
Quite honestly, I hadn't had an opportunity to discuss it with a fellow commissioner. But if anyone's interested in serving on that, I would appreciate you stepping up now.
Well, look, I just want to say that that was desirable. I enjoyed that. That's, we got a lot of things done. We did a lot for the pandemic. That's, I'm going to urge anybody who, I'm going to urge someone on this board to take that seat. I'd like to have it, but the bylaws say no.
Yeah, I know. I know. I'll do it. All right. Commissioner Tobin's agreed that he would do it. Thank you, Commissioner. Those in favor of that, then, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose like sign? Motion carries unanimous. Thank you, Commissioner.
Next is the Eastlake Community Center Board, the term of Crystal Bassnight expires, and the council recommends her reappointment.
Move to reappoint.
There's a motion on the floor to reappoint.
Is there a second?
Commissioner Bateman, those in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose like sign. Motion carries unanimous.
Then on the Health and Human Services Board, the term of Ashley Jackson, Nick Cuses, Kevin Phillips, and Christopher Roberts expire this month. The rea, the reappoint, the board recommends a reappointment of Christopher Roberts and Ashley Jackson, and the appointment of Brent Richardson, a pharmacist, to replace Kevin Phillips, and the appointment of Jamie Daniels, an Ad-Large member, to replace Nick Cuses.
Move to reappoint Chris Roberts and Ashley Jackson, and the new appointments of Brent Richardson and Jamie Daniel.
There's a motion on the floor by the vice chairman, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner Couch, any further discussion? Hearing none, those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose like sign. Motion carries unanimous.
And then for your upcoming board and committee appointments, in October, you have the Veterans Advisory Council with one term expiring, in November, the older adult service advisory council with two terms expiring, and in December, you have the Equalization and Review Board with five terms expiring, the Special Motor Vehicle Evaluation Review Committee with three terms expiring, and the Tourism Board with six terms expiring, and that would be your agenda, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, county manager. That brings us to, uh, item twenty-two, that's Commissioner's business, but prior to that, I'd like to respond to public comment. Gentlemen, those that still remain, I'm sorry you've had to wait this long, but we do, we set aside this time to try to respond to public comment. There were three specific issues this morning. One, with regards to pickleball, and additional courts and places to play, et cetera. The second item was, um, item seventeen on the agenda, that gentleman's left, we addressed that, so that's been approved. The third was, uh, Ms. Harrison speaking with respects to blue catfish, and I will bring that, her concerns up with Commissioner House, so that he can address that with the, um, appropriate authorities. I do want to say that with respects to pickleball and the request that we've had today, I want to thank each and every one of the folks that spoke today. There was, I believe, seven, no, nine individuals who spoke. Mr. Barr, thank you for being here, introducing yourself with the O B X Club. You said you'd been involved about eighteen months with that board. You also serve on our Parks and Recreation Board. You know, we've had this discussion about pickleball for some good, a good while now. And, and, and all due respect to those concerns with pickleball, this board, and John Harris said it best than any, we respond, we do everything that's ever brought before us, we respond, we act. There's no other board, and John said it earlier this morning, in recent years, that has done any more than this group of commissioners. And, and I, I'm right there commending this board for what we've done. If you look at the number of projects that we've had over the last eight, ten years, it's been incredible what we have accomplished. No prior boards has accomplished what we have accomplished. We take our facilities, unlike our neighbors, we don't use occupancy tax. We have another fund to do what we do with our construction and our facilities, and that's the land transfer. And we're fortunate that we've built a ton of money with respects to our land transfer, and we're able to do the things that we're doing. First and foremost, we addressed this in a C I P recently, and brought it to this board, and this board passed it, that it's time for us to step up to the plate and spend the millions of dollars that it's going to take for outdated E M S services in this county. I will not put anything before safety for our citizens of Dare County. It's too critical. With respects to our parks and recreations, our facilities go back to the sixties, and we've done what we've done to hire somebody to, uh, to give us a, a, a plan to work on those facilities and, and increase those facilities and, and take care of those facilities. To say that we don't care about senior adults, as one individual said, really irritates me. I'm a senior adult, and I've got plenty of places to go in this county if I want to do something. Some seven or eight months ago, I put out a, a, a schedule of pickleball opportunities for people to play. It was thirty-eight hours a day, gentlemen. Thirty-eight hours a day you could play pickleball throughout the county. I'm looking at this, the August and September schedule, the August schedule, one hundred and thirty-two hours that can be played. That's outdoors, sixty-six hours indoors. I mean, the list goes on and on. There are multiple places in the Clount County that you can play pickleball. It, it, it just really infuriates me to say that we don't have places to play pickleball. In July, I attended a function at Parks and Recs facility in Kill Devil Hills, that Johnny Robinson had the five U N C basketball players come, and there was one hundred fifty, two hundred people there for that function, and they asked me to do a welcome, I did a welcome at six o'clock. I left as soon as I did a welcome. I left out of there. You know how many courts we have at our rec facility, at rec park?
I do not.
Does anybody else know? Six courts.
Significant.
Six courts. You know how many courts were being used at six o'clock?
Six.
One. Playing pickleball. So my point is that it's not whether or not we've got places for them to play, it's whether or not they want to travel and play when they want to play. One gentleman spoke today. Mr. Fountain, he plays two to three times a week. He didn't appear to have a problem playing pickleball in Dare County, anywhere. I understand, correct me if I'm wrong, but I understand there's two different groups of people. One is the residents of the county that Mr. Barr represents as chairman of the O B X Club, and then there's another group of folks that involve visitors and, and non-residents and everything, folks that want to play. You know, and I, and I, I'm going to address this to Mr. Garber. And all due respect, Mr. Garber, I have answered every one of your emails. I've talked to you over the phone. You came to our C I P meeting, you didn't say a word, and I would have recognized you if you'd have raised your hand with respects to pickleball, and if you, anything you wanted to say at our C I P meeting, but you didn't. And then after the fact, I find out that this, I mean, our C I P, we agreed to take care of trying to help the folks that play pickleball. We put a half a million dollars in the C I P, but I guess it wasn't soon enough because it's twenty twenty-eight. Well, Mr. Barr brought to our attention, and thankfully so, but I appreciate you doing that, is, my God, if we can build eight courts for a half a million dollars, then, then dang, we ain't talking to the wrong folks to get two courts. And we need to do exactly what you suggested, and that's bring in you folks to have some input when we get to that point, so that we can spend the money wisely and get more courts for that half a million dollars. And if I have to come to that Parks and Rec meeting to make sure that they do that, I will do that as chairman. And so thank you for bringing that attention. We don't do anything? I mean, you brought it again, Mr. Barr. Y'all have the pictures of the tennis courts. What'd we do? How many courts we got there?
We got four.
We got four courts, you see it. So we're not doing anything but pickleball? Well, you know what? I can work with anybody and do anything I possibly can, and try to make something happen, and this board will do the same thing. But when you go behind my back and you talk about our board doesn't do anything, it is absolutely ridiculous that we put this off until twenty twenty-eight. But we've got bigger fish to fry right now, folks, and I'm sorry, but there's plenty of places to play pickleball, pickleball in Dare County. Go look at this sheet. And if it ain't in your backyard, then get in your car and drive for thirty minutes to find a place to play pickleball. So that's my take on it, Mr. Garber, and you feel free to call me, and you feel free to email me, but you do it to me. Don't do it behind my back and talk about this board doesn't do anything, because I can confront a conversation and have an open dialogue and try to work things out, but don't talk about this board behind our back when we're working and doing everything humanly possible to make it possible for people to play pickleball in Dare County. Does anybody else have anything else want to say with respects to public comment?
I'm good. I think you covered it.
Did I cover it? Thank you very much. We'll move on.
Thank you, Bob.
Pardon?
Thanks for your comments.
We'll move on to commissioner comments, and I'll ask the vice chairman, he will start this off.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and thank you for addressing that subject. I think on the schedule that we saw related to particularly the E M S, that is job one, as you stated, and I don't think we can look past that. If, if we can sit with folks who are interested in this and have some conversation, see where else we may be able to, to find some funding for it, then, you know, I'm all for it, but first things first.
Thank you.
Want to congratulate our service pin recipients, as we always do, for their forty years of service. Katisha and Angela, thank you a lot, y'all are what makes this place tick, and our employee of the month, Matt, thank you too, pardon, appreciate you. To Jim Wooton, excellence in the Federal Emergency Management Advanced Academy work, that was outstanding, and again, it's folks like that who attain excellence in their jobs that make this county what it is. Want to remind everyone that the annual walk, I think it's the thirteenth Annual Walk Against Addiction, will be on Saturday, September twenty-fourth, from eight till about twelve o'clock, at First Light High School. And if you can come out, there will be some papers presented there on various subjects. If you want to do the walk, I think it, it can start at eight o'clock, you don't have to, you can walk by yourself, you can walk with a group, you don't have to start at eight, you can start whenever you want to. But come out and, and participate in that, I think you'll, I think you'll enjoy it, and it'll open up, open your eyes up to some areas that need work in Dare County with regard to, to treating some of these addictive behaviors, and that's all I have, sir.
Thank you, Vice Chairman. Commissioner Bateman?
Yeah, um, we lost a couple of really nice community givers last couple of weeks. Mark Ed in the morning, Mark Johnson, he passed away. Radio personality, just a big guy and a big giver, and Matt Tepere, who was, I guess, paddleboard and, and passed. Another big giver there. As, um, assistant, as vice chairman, probably even just said, Walk Addiction, it's very, very important, guys, just to bring awareness to the addiction we have in Dare County. Also, we want to highlight the fact that it's not, you know, alcoholism, addiction, suicide, mental illness, it's not, nothing to be embarrassed of. We need to be open about it, we need to embrace our folks that are affected with these illnesses and so forth, because it is illness, just like someone has cancer, they go to a doctor, they get a prognosis, they get a treatment. It's the same thing with alcoholism, the same thing with mental illness. We need to treat it, and it needs to be treated as an illness, so if you've got time, come out and check it out. And also, on the twenty-seventh, as, as, um, Air Health and Human Services Director said, we have Suicide in the afternoon, Prevention and Awareness at First Light High School at five thirty, so appreciate your help and thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Bateman. Commissioner Couch?
Yes, sir, thank you for your remarks on National Aviation Day. That was just a great day in Dare County, there's a lot of stuff going on, and I would very much have liked to have been in wine cheese, because in Hatters, we support that dredge. My district is, by all indications, everything I've ever heard, bring, bring it, and I'm glad we've got it, it's going to really be a big asset. There was a good spirit of camaraderie there. Dr. Larry Teis, he was the state historian for years, he gave a lot of, he did about an hour presentation, it was well attended upstairs, on what Orville and Wilbur Wright, mostly Orville, what Orville Wright was really like. He was a, he was an introvert, and he was not one of these guys, that he, he hated to be in public settings. He, he loathed the, the business end of things, all he really wanted to, to, to do was fly and to get there. He had a, a, a relationship of, of, of almost intense jealousy when Catherine Wright, his sister, chose to marry, her biggest problem was how she was going to let Orville know, because she was taking care of him. And Larry Teis went in, went into a lot of that, he was, he was a big part of the centennial we had with flag there. But I think going forward, I would hope, and there's a little bit of movement, we'll see when we get closer to this time here next year, but I would propose, like to propose that, yes, National Aviation Day is about Orville Wright's birthday, and it's got a big umbrella, but it's also Catherine Wright's birthday, and she's, her contribution to those guys, just like Gertrude Rogala had a big contribution into Francis's success, Catherine Wright was instrumental. Their degree of success would have been impacted if it were not for Catherine Wright. So we'll get to the appropriate time, I'll put together a resolution, and we'll see what we can do here for National Aviation Day, recognizing both Orville and his sister Catherine Wright, and see if maybe we can get something done on a state level as well. Good meeting today, we got a lot done, I've got a headache, but I'm glad we went through it anyway, so that's all I've got.
Thank you, Commissioner Couch. Commissioner Tobin?
That's funny. I've got a couple of things. The first one, as with all new vessels, there's always a few hiccups, and we had our first hiccup on the Miss Katie. The hydraulics that service the drag arms overheated, it is something that's under warranty, so mechanics came up from Alabama, removed the system yesterday, and today they're on a truck heading to Alabama, and then they go, I believe, to Texas after that, and then back up here, they should be back up here by the end of the week, and installed and ready to dredge next week. With that said, the dredge has dredged about eighty-five hundred cubic yards so far, so it's doing real good. The, the crews are really, really, really doing a good job. The other thing I have is I was contacted by a landowner here in Dare County about people coming on his land unlawfully to hunt, and they had gone on his land and planted a bunch of sunflowers and put out a bunch of corn for the opening day of dove season, and he requested that, that we adopt some language to add to our ordinance. Right now, Dare County relies on the Land Order Protection Act from the state. The Land Order Protection Act states that you have to. uh, the, from the state, um, the Land Order Protection Act states that you have to have signs no more than two hundred yards apart, or purple paint put on trees and stuff, uh, to mark your land for no hunting, the problem with that in our area is marshland, so, what he, he pulled some language and sent it to me from some of our surrounding counties, um, and I'll read it, it said, "It is unlawful to hunt or fish on the land of another without having written permission on one's person, signed and dated for the current hunting or fishing season of the landowner or le- leese, or the landowners or leese's designee. The written permission shall not be valid for more than one year and may be valid for a shorter period stated in the permission, the written permission shall be displayed upon request of any law enforcement officer, Wildlife Resource Commission, sheriffs, deputy sheriffs, by any other law enforcement officers with general subject matter." I would ask the board, uh, that we adopt this, and I would like to make a motion to adopt it and put it in our ordinances.
Okay, there's a motion on the floor to adopt this new language, is there a second?
I'll second it, but I-
For purposes of discussion?
Yeah, I have a question.
It's been seconded by Commissioner Oatman, now the floor is open for discussion.
Bobby, this meet legal.
I don't, I mean, if there's an issue with it, it's, it's what they call a preemption issue, I don't, and I don't know whether it's preempted or not, because the state statute already addresses this, and so we're basically relaxing the state statute.
Well, I don't know if we're relaxing it or not, I think, I think we're actually tightening it up, the problem, and I totally, I hadn't thought about it until, until I got this, uh, from Johnny the other day, and, but, but he makes a good point, uh, the, the, you, you can't, you can't paint, you can't, you can't paint the grass purple, and, uh, and, and it's, it's very difficult to put up, uh, posted signs that are gonna last, I, I think, I think his argument makes sense, um, I didn't, I didn't know exactly about the wording, if that was the best way to say it.
The only issue I'd have is you're removing one of the requirements of the state statute, and whether that would uphold, I don't-
Well, the state statute's still there.
Yeah, the state statutes, well, if anybody has land that's inside that can post it properly, that's not a problem, the problem is, is the folks that are on the marsh can't post their land properly. It augments it.
I, I don't, I, I'm not telling you not to adopt this, because I don't know that there's, the risk matters, uh, but if we're gonna have this discussion, the legislature met and decided that in order to have this rule, they required that lands be posted, now we're saying, oh, no, you can have this rule, but you don't have to post your land.
That's correct.
And so, whether that's a preemption or not, if it isn't, it's close, and so, but that would be somebody who got charged under the statute to fight that battle, if, if they chose to do that.
In other words, they could, they could say that it doesn't meet the state requirement.
Well, they could say that it's preempted, and therefore it's void.
See, I think it's a good idea, too, and I was happy to vote for it, but I'm thinking along those lines as well, Bobby, that, um, can we, can we look into this and vote on it at the next meeting, or is there a sense of urgency?
Well, there's not anything else I'm gonna find that's gonna tell you different than I just told you, I mean, there's not, there's no case law on this statute that's, I, I'd say there's not, I haven't looked, but unlikely.
I mean, there hasn't been a guy walking through the marshland with unposted land that they arrested and cited?
Well-
It's gotta, thousand-
Unlikely, so-
Okay.
It's a, it's a preemption thing, and there's no clear cut where the line is where you do and you don't, and that's-
So we can vote on it and-
Vote on it, and if it's challenged, it'll get reversed and-
All right, then let's vote on it.
Yeah, there you go, all right, any further comments? All right, then with, uh, that motion on the floor, those in favor, signify by saying aye. Those like sign, motion carries unanimous.
Thank you.
Thank you.
That's all I have.
Thank you, Commissioner Tobin, Commissioner Ross?
I'll be very brief, uh, thanks, sir, for mentioning the nine-twenty-seven, five-thirty PM Suicide Awareness Town Hall at First Flight High School, second leading cause of death in twenty to thirty-nine-year-olds, and I recently participated in a Zoom meeting put on by the Public School Forum, in which they were relating, uh, to quote candidates for either commission or board of education, how does it work in North Carolina, how do you, how do we teach kids, what are the, how do we fund the schools, and so forth, they related that, uh, they didn't have the North Carolina data on this, but nationally, uh, fourth graders and eighth graders in testing, uh, showed the most dramatic one-year decline in the last forty years in reading and math, I'll repeat that, most dramatic one-year decline in forty years in reading and math in fourth and eighth graders, and, so I'm simply saying between, uh, suicide awareness, between fentanyl webinars, between now what, colored candy, colored, uh, fentanyl pills coming in, kids being locked out of school, the largest decline we've seen in a generation. I've written a letter to Superintendent of Public Instruction Catherine Truitt, three weeks ago, some of you may have seen it, where I requested she return and publish a whole child wellness assessment by county in North Carolina called the Roadmap of Need.
No response.
No response, so I will be following up, but that was three weeks ago, anyway, that's all I have, and that's, thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Ross, it's time for County Manager's List, if you have anything else for us today, County Manager?
Uh, one thing, Mr. Chairman, we, we failed on our-
That's all.
-board appointments, include the Transportation Board, uh, they recommend that Jim B. Rafferty fill the public business sector vacancy, um, they don't have a recommendation for the government sector vacancy at this time.
Move to approve.
Okay, there's a motion on the floor about a vice chair to approve.
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner Bateman, further discussion, hearing none, those in favor, signify by saying aye. Pose like sign, motion carries unanimous.
Aye.
Thank you, uh, Public Information Officer, Ms. Hester, do you have anything to add?
No, sir.
All right, Ms. Sally, you sitting in for Dave today?
Yes, sir.
Long meeting, long meeting, do you have anything for us?
I do not, thank you.
Thank you very much, well, I need a motion to adjourn until Wednesday, um, uh, October the fifth at nine AM.
So move, so move.
Motion on the floor by Commissioner Tobin, seconded by Commissioner Ross, any further discussion, hearing none, those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose like sign, motion carries unanimous.